Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We've got a full house tonight. Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Can I have a second to the agenda? Second by Mr. O'Toole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. So, there's a lot of people here. I'm wondering, are there any walk-ins this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the town administrator.
Mr. Chair, I have three items to talk with you about. The first is, I don't know if you had an opportunity to go to Public Safety Day on Saturday. It was absolutely phenomenal. I can't say enough wonderful things about it, but I know a lot of residents and especially children attended. And the police department and fire department did an unbelievable job. Between giving rides on the vehicles, to like getting inside the Harbor Master and the police marine unit, to be able to look at the climb on the fire trucks, to the bouncy houses, to the macaroni and cheese competition that all our restaurants donated to, and the free ice cream given out by Nana's. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day. And whatever the turnout we had, I'm sure is going to be quadrupled next year. And this came on the heels of our very successful DPW Truck Day. And I just want to commend all the people who were involved, and also the businesses who always step up to help us. So, just a shout-out to those folks.
And I'll just pile on to that for a second. It was great. I was there for hours. I tried all nine macaronis. Reva's won. Very good. Jamie's was very good, too. And the firefighters and the police did a great job. There were hundreds of kids there. They were there, they started coming over after soccer games and basketball games. Helicopter came and landed. They had the K-9 unit out there, showing how that worked. And then, as you mentioned, we have a new vehicle, which I wasn't aware of. You guys gotta see this thing. They're a huge mechanical arm on it. It's like a robot. But they were giving rides out and all that stuff. And it was a great, great time.
Surplus. Surplus vehicle.
Surplus, right. So, we paid, I think we paid $600 for the vehicle. It's a huge Army vehicle, bigger than the five-ton truck that we had before. And I think the $600 was what it cost to paint it and to put our insignia on the side.
And it's a transport vehicle during storms because it's so high and big and strong.
Right. And it's concealed, so people can get in and not get wet. My daughter took a ride in it. So, great day. Those are the things that we all talk about, which made Situate such a great place to live. So, kudos to everyone involved there.
And the next thing I have is some really terrific news about a big feature spread in the town of Situate in this month or this quarter's issue of New England Boating, which you all have a copy of in front of you. And I asked Chris McConaughey and Anne Burbine from the EDC to just stop by, because I told him I was going to be talking about it. Page 72. And just a terrific, terrific article about Situate and what a great place it is to visit, and the amenities we offer, not just for people on boats, but shops, restaurants, bike trails, historic stuff. And we're gonna get some media about this. And Chris, I don't know if I'm missing anything, but if you want to add anything. Just a lot of great work that the EDC engaged with this company to do this work for us.
Yeah, no, I would just add that this is great, but what's really exciting is that we also are going to be featured on their television program this fall. And I should have the date off the top of my head, but I don't. It's early October, and we're going to be promoting it via a couple of different means. I think the cable will be promoting it via the newspapers, so that townspeople can see. But it's going to be, I think, a half an hour feature program on NESN. And then, the other thing that's really terrific about this opportunity is that we own all of the assets. So, we own all of the photography, we own all of the video assets that have been shot. I'm going to be talking to them about the feasibility of putting together maybe a 30 or a 60-second video condensing the program that we can put on the website, for example. But then we'll have all these assets to use to market the town as we see fit over time.
So, this is hot off the press. It just came today.
It arrived yesterday.
Yep.
Let people see it.
Yep. With thousands around.
I want to backfill. You see what you're supposed to sign.
So, that's it. Great work, and we're going to get the word out on the website.
Chris, thanks. That's a great piece.
Good. Thank you.
The other thing that I think we will discuss perhaps is the board's pleasure at a later meeting, but on September 3rd, I convened a three-hour meeting of all the departments and staff that are involved in coastal management. And what we did is, as you can see from the stuff that you have on your tablets, is we did a comprehensive list of all the things the town is doing. I think sometimes it gets lost because you hear about the community rating system, you hear about the FEMA maps, you hear about the hazard mitigation and elevation grants, you hear about seawall repairs. So, what we wanted to do is just put everything together on everything that we're working on, and also to discuss what our challenges and obstacles are from what we're doing and what's on our plate, and also what our next action item steps are in terms of priorities or long-hanging fruit. As the board knows, we've gotten a number of grants in the last year, from the EPA grant to the Coastal Resiliency Grant, to the Sea Level Rise Grant. And so, we're trying to distill all this information to see, instead of making them a shelf plan, what really makes sense to the town in terms of this comprehensive coastal impact and management that we want to do, and also be able to use it as a resource with the Coastal Advisory Commission that you just appointed. So, what this does is it sort of looks at where we can look at things in the town to mitigate some of these challenges, where we have to plug in voids or whatever, where we can do things better. But mostly, it's also to see the tremendous impact that's having in terms of an allocation of town resources and tax dollars for this kind of work, which, for all intents and purposes, we were doing none of five years ago, and have gone from really dollar one in lots of ways, to creating Nancy's position, to doing a lot of stuff around this, and with grants and things like that. So, I put the whole thing up there. We sort of just, I put all the notes together, and we divided into proactive and reactive things, and what the status of these are. Nancy Durfee is now working on allocating a percentage of time that the staff is spending on all this in order to carve this out. And what you have in this color-coded pie chart is how Nancy's time, just Nancy's time, has been distributed the past year. So, anything more that we do, any more grants that we do, is in addition to all this. And when we talked about challenges and obstacles, the staff did individual tallying of what they believed was their five most important, five obstacles to them, as far as the challenges we faced on foreshore protection and coastal stuff. And then, we compiled all that and picked the top five. And then, the last page are action items and follow-up. We have another meeting November 3rd. So, a lot of hard work by the staff. There's no doubt in my mind that the town of Situate is doing more on coastal issues than any other town in Massachusetts right now, and maybe in a lot of other coastal states. And this is what our goal is, is to put it in one snapshot, so you can see everything we're doing at the same time. So, as I said, we can talk about it later in depth, as the staff has more stuff that I think they'll come to you in a few months with recommendations. But some good work on the part of the town. So, that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Any comments on the coastal stuff? I mean, we've all been to the events. We see the great turnouts. We hear the great questions. The public is involved in it, and, you know, we're getting the experts in the fields out there to help us deal with this issue. So, thank you, Trish, and thank you, Nancy. Nancy's gotten more grants. She's paid for herself about 10 times. And, you know, we're trying to be proactive, like you said, on this, so. Anything on these upcoming events that we need to go over? On the 28th, I see the Fax have someone from Washington to come here, talk about Project SAMSHA or something, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Right. These are the people that give us the money for the grant, and they're coming to see what we've done with the money.
Right. So, again, getting people from the federal level to come down and talk to us about our programming. That's about it. And just a reminder, special town meeting is November 2nd. Good. All right. We'll move along to our 7:10 item, which is an acceptance of gifts. There's an Eagle Scout project that Joe Kellerhals is here. Joe, you want to come up? How are you?
I'm all right.
Have a seat. And speak into the mic. It's been a long time since Little Leake.
Yeah.
So, tell us what you did. Tell us about your project.
So, what I did was I built three picnic tables for the town. One is sitting right outside the door there. The other, another is in the quad at the high school, and another down at the community center. They're all pressure-treated in galvanized materials, so they're built to last a lifetime. Yeah.
Great. So, you raised money?
Yeah, I held a fundraiser across the street at St. Luke's. Made like $438, which covered pretty much all the costs of everything.
Great. And you made them, and you want to donate them to the town? They were using that one, the police were using that with pizzas on it for the Public Safety Day the other day, so it's already getting used. Any comments from the board?
It's well-built.
I thought that myself. Thank you.
Joe, I just want to say thank you. You know, I happened to see it last week, when it must have been placed like Thursday or Wednesday I came to the town hall. And I have to tell you, I saw it and I said, I didn't realize it was through you. I thought, geez, somehow the DPW or they, and I'm like, we should do more of these. Put them out throughout town. And then I found out when preparing for our meeting that it was done by you. And I have to say, you know, I've said it before, this board has said it before, it's through the efforts of people like yourself, doing different things in the community that make our community better. And I'll tell you, that's, you're right, it's going to last a lifetime. And I have to tell you, every time I see it there, whether I see it down at the Maritime Center, or I'm not sure if it's the Maritime Center, or whether it's Pier 44, all right, where the library is, I'll be thinking of you and people like you who do great things for your town. So, I'm very happy that you did it, and, you know, what a great effort on behalf of Boy Scouts, but also for you giving back to your town. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question, Joe. Is this, you've done, are you going to be an Eagle Scout now, or do you have other things to do?
Well, my paperwork's submitted. I'm waiting to hear back on whether I'm actually getting a badge. I don't see if I want one. But after that, I'm going to become an Assistant Scoutmaster in my tour.
Great, great.
So, I'll be doing that on and off.
Now, if they don't give you a badge, I bet you this board would be happy to give you a badge. Don't you worry, that's more meaningful, all right?
One of us will probably be at your meeting, giving you the badge. So, congratulations and thank you for the donation. Do we need a motion to accept it? No? Great. All right, Joe. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Okay. Now, we have, next item is discussion vote from the Knights of Columbus, the Annual Tootsie Roll Drive. Mark Sullivan. Mark?
I'm actually Mike Burke.
Okay. Mark, Mike?
How you doing?
Very well.
It's that time of year again, October 23rd to 25th, the Annual Tootsie Roll Drive in here in Situate. Just very briefly for people a line away, the money, all the money raised goes to help children and young adults with intellectual disabilities. What I like about this channel is the money stays in Situate. We're always looking for grants to put out to the guys, or come across individuals, children and young adults with intellectual disabilities, to reach out to us if you want to get that money to the people of Situate. And we want to thank the town of Situate in general, and the board in particular, for their continued support.
Thank you.
Don't have to thank us. Thank the, you know, the people that are involved that are doing it.
I was going to say, normally, being samples, but you don't have to. We'll buy out. Yeah, it's a great drive. It's been going on for almost 30 years plus. And you're absolutely right, the fact that it remains in the community, and also what the Knights do here in our community, it goes without saying. So, thank you.
And that, I just want to add what John said. Anytime there's a need in this town, there are organizations that people go to to help them, and the Knights are always a participant. I've never heard you say no to anything regardless of the cause, and it's one of those great entities that participates on very, very many different levels to help people, never looking for recognition, and always, you know, writing checks where they need to go. So, thank you guys very much. Thank you. Marty, do you want to read that?
Want to do the vote first?
Sure. Can I have a motion?
Vote to, go ahead, Tony. Vote to approve the Knights of Columbus Annual Tootsie Roll Drive from October 23rd through 25th, 2015. That's Friday through Sunday at various locations in the town of Situate, including various businesses and the transfer station.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahy. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Aye, it is unanimous.
Whereas the Board of Selectmen would like to recognize a very worthy fundraising event sponsored by the local Situate Council of the Knights of Columbus, and whereas this campaign will be conducted from Friday, October 23rd, to Sunday, October 25th, 2005, via their well-known Tootsie Roll Drive, which will benefit the physically challenged and learning disabled in various communities throughout our Commonwealth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the entire town of Situate and its Board of Selectmen thank the Knights of Columbus for their continued dedication to charitable organizations, and hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 25th, 2015, as Knights of Columbus Days for the physically challenged and learning disabled, and urge all the citizens of Situate to participate in this important effort. Signed the 22nd day of September, 2015. Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Thank you. And I think we can give you the signed copy right now.
Yep.
Mike, thank you, Mike, and thank everyone involved. The next item is Veterans Advisory Council Charge. Don Knapp, the Veterans Agent. I saw him.
Keeping you right on time, Don. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Don. So, just a quick summary, we've talked about this two times, I think.
Twelve.
Twelve times?
Yep.
And we think we have the wording down. Do you want to, I don't know, Marty, do you want to give a quick summary, or do you want, Don, you want to?
Let Don do it, because he just made a couple of adjustments that the board had requested.
Good.
Okay. So, the paragraph that we were looking at was on the second page, second paragraph, and we just wanted to reiterate, and it states, "For the purpose of the membership of the Board of Selectmen, appointments, supermajority of the council will be veterans as defined by Mass General law, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 43. The Board of Selectman member appointed will not come towards the supermajority." That was it.
Great. So, we want to make sure that there's a supermajority of veterans on the council. You know, so usually, there's one or maybe two other people that have the opportunity if they have some, you know, background or something that can be helpful to the group as well. So, just the charge itself, for those of you that are new, this is, again, provide support to all Situate veterans or widows, widowers, spouses, dependents, and their families, provide support to Situate Veteran Service Offices, and to promote recognition and observation of the patriotic holidays, and to foster understanding and appreciation with the town of Situate with the achievements, contributions, and sacrifices of the veterans of our town, and also to promote outreach programs for Situate veterans. And I know, boy, when did we, probably three years ago, we had three people participating in the programs, and, or a handful, let's say, and the work that you and the other people have done since then in getting the outreach out there has really made the program much more substantial. So, thank you to you, Mr. Kelly, and the other people that are involved with that. So, it's great. And Ed Gavell and the rest of the group. Anything to add, guys?
No.
Wait, motion?
That's what I was looking for. I was looking for.
Move, accept.
Vote to approve the Veterans Advisory Counsel.
Okay. Vote to approve the Veterans Advisory Charge?
Motion by Mr. O'Toole.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Don, for coming in.
Thanks, Don. Thank you, Don.
And I think we've already appointed, or have four or five people maybe?
I think we're at five, yep.
So, there's still a few open slots if anyone's watching this and wants to be, get involved in that council, please.
Actually, we haven't actually appointed. I think we're doing it later in the meeting.
Okay. But there's four or five people interested.
Yeah, we've actually have some people here in the audience.
But, you know what? Before we go to the next one, I meant to mention this in the beginning. Ms. Curran isn't here this evening. She's unfortunately had a late business trip to Oregon, so that's why she is not able to make the meeting tonight. But we've spoken with her and got her input on stuff and what have you. So, moving on to the next item, and I don't, is Mr. Snow here? Is he up in the hallway?
No, you've missed one, Tony. The Annual Appointments, Veterans Advisory Council. We've got at least one person here.
Okay. So, we'll do the interviews.
Yep. Mr. Bailey. One of them I know very well, I see him out there. Mr. Bailey, I think is up there.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, would you come up to the table, please, sir? How are you, Jim?
Thank you for coming in. Oh, here we go. Great. So, you've applied to be on the Veterans Advisory Council?
Yes, I have.
Great. Can you tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the committee, the council?
Well, presently, I'm a member of the DAV in Chapter 65, and I've been there for One thing that really kind of gets me is, is a lot of benefits for widows and people that don't know what's out there. So, that's my main purpose really, to get involved, is to get the information.
Outreach. Great. Any questions?
I know Jim. I know Marty, that does too. And Jim, you'd make a great addition. Great research guy. He runs around and finds things out for people and provides information and... Great job. I've worked on some things with him, so. So, you got my vote, Jim, but I can't vote right now. You got my vote, obviously.
Great. Jim, thanks for coming and your involvement. We're going to vote later on in the meeting, I think, and we appreciate you putting your name in. Great. Is Ron Wheatley here? Ron, how are you?
Now, he doesn't have to wait around, should, Tony.
No, he doesn't.
But he doesn't know that. He'll probably...
We'll tell him afterwards. We'll tell him.
Hi, Ron.
Hi.
Can you just give, I meant to ask Mr. Bailey, just give your name and address real quick before?
It's Ron Wheatley, 53 Front Row, Situate.
Great. And you're applying, you're also applying for the Veteran Advisory Council?
I put my application in. And I'm a Vietnam veteran. I served in Vietnam, '67 to '68, there during tests. The reason I want to serve is I've been really doing that all the time. I used to write an article, a column in Situate called "Calling All Veterans." Some of you may have seen it. So, that's kind of a continuing interest that I have. And now that's being published in a book called "A Time for War," and it's kind of incorporates Situate, how it treats its veterans, and all these interviews. Basically, the theme is developing. It was really started out as just veterans' interviews, going back to World War II. There's couples from the Civil War that I couldn't interview, although some of you may think I've probably heard. Anyway, I got that from letters, that sort of thing. But it covers from World War II right through up to Afghanistan. That's my latest project. Still getting that out. Should be published in a month or two. I'm also an author of two other books, one of which is a bestseller on Nigeria. It's on the Amazon website, under the Africa genre. So, I like to write. I'm an attorney. I have my practice in armed court. And so, there may be a showstopper here, though. Since last winter, I decided, my wife decided really, that we're not going to stay here for the cold months. We're going to be gone from January through 1st of April. So, I'm going to be absent for three months. And I don't know if that's just this year or other years, but I just want to let you know, full disclosure on that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wheatley? No? Good. Well, you know, I think the meetings are going to be probably once a month, is that what you think, Marty?
We're looking at once a month, and at some point, it's going to be once every two months, so it may not be an issue. We'll just have to look at that, Ron. And I think we have, what, the council consists of one one-year member and three four-year members? Is that what? The way I'm reading it, to start with? I'm only saying, because, Ron, it's first year, maybe, see how it goes with the first year if you get on, for the three months. I have no issues with it, but I'm like, you know, that might be a consideration to see how it goes.
Just believe and follow the score.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Is there anyone else this evening here? You're not on my list.
Yeah, should be.
We don't want you, Dennis. That's the problem. I thought I took you off the list, Dennis. How'd you get back in here?
Well, you know, hey, I got a way. You had to know them. Not going to ask.
Have a seat.
Have a seat. Tell us your name and address.
My name is Dennis A. Bedore, 8 Ocean Side Drive, Ocean Side Inn. And I would like to serve on this council. As you know, I started with Mr. my other commander, and we started the legion from nothing and built it to where it is today. And we had nine thousand years. And I served in Vietnam, as a matter of fact. Ron has made sure, insane, God help him, that's why he's put some old reserves, yeah, with the last signature, communicating. And I'm in all the favor of helping advance widows or whatever. I've always been that way. I like serving my community. I love Situate. Don, would you like to be?
She's not here. I won't tell her that. How's that?
Well, I would, yeah. In danger. Yeah.
But any questions for Dennis?
What do you want to know?
I already know too much.
Well, I will say this, you're very active. You help with every veterans' event that goes on, and you've been a big proponent for the veteran services all along. So, you know, we appreciate the effort that you've put in.
And I liked Ron Knapp, too.
Do you?
Good man.
Good. But he is a good man.
He's going to be my future boss, so, yeah.
So, any other questions?
No.
Great. All right, Dennis, thanks for coming in.
Put you back on the list, Dennis. How's that?
Stay young, man.
I'm gonna take just a quick two-second break, I wanna talk to Frank in the hallway real quick.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the quick break. The next... The next item that we have is a discussion and vote on a conflict of interest determination. Frank Snow with the Conservation Commission is before us. Frank, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Great. Just give us your name and address, real quick.
Frank Snow, Humphrey Way.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Good. So... Do you want us, what's a...
I can explain this, if you like.
I mean, I read the stuff, but why don't you...
So I had checked with the Ethics Commission regarding my... If I work with a person that represents clients that come before the commission, I was concerned about that. And I actually had done this last year and emailed the Ethics Commission and asked them what would be the proper procedure to deal with that. And they basically instructed me to download a form that I filled out and submitted to you, to your board. It says, "You appoint me to the commission, so therefore you're the proper board to give that to." And it basically states that particular, in this case, it was Morse Engineering, is a company that I use for myself, for my business. And they may also come before the Conservation Commission, representing other individuals or businesses. And that I can act impartially when it comes to that situation. And I think if it's, you know, I think it's the proper thing to do, to make everyone aware that that situation occurs. And that I, that's how we deal with it, and that's how the Ethics Commission recommends that we deal with it. They say it's perfectly fine to do it, it's just that I need to notify you as the appointing authority that that is the situation.
Great. So, for people that don't know, Frank's a local builder, and he does a lot of work in town and in the local area. There's a lot of good people in the Situate and surrounding areas that are good engineers and good, you know, different tradespeople that come in before you for different things. It's not uncommon, and you've been doing this for how long?
Too long.
Right, so he's been on Concom for at least nine years.
That's right.
And is a huge asset to the town, so I'm sure this has happened many times over the last nine years.
You really haven't had too many? You really haven't? And I think I gave you one about a year ago that had to do with an attorney. And I filed a paper similar to that a year or two ago with this like one as well. And it is, you know, it's kind of a double-edged piece. If you'd like to have folks like maybe Sean or Martin, you know, if you're working with Sean, that work locally, you're bound to have some situations where things overlap along the way, and you have to look at that and say, do... In the case of, say, a butter or maybe a family member, I wouldn't lose myself from the vote on that or even participating in the hearing, is a way to do it. But in the case of, say, a person that comes in, a professional that represents others, then I have to look at that and say, can I make a fair and impartial decision on those hearings? And that takes place, and I think I can. Otherwise, I think it would be really difficult for anybody that works locally to serve on a board. This is my own opinion. It's hard enough, I mean, we had no applicants for the commission this year, and I think it would be hard to fill a lot of positions in town. There isn't some accommodations made for that, and that's how the Ethics Commission recommends it, you know.
And I mean, you're talking to four people that know this very, very well, so, any comments from... Anybody else?
I just had a question for Frank. So Frank, have you had a situation where that's come up, where you've actually recused yourself? If it's a, if it happens to be somebody who has done work for you, have you ever had that situation come up?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, if we...
So you've stepped back and...
If we have a, well, listen, if I have a customer that I've worked for, certainly I wouldn't participate in that, and there's another Amber's not to. In the case of an engineer or an attorney or whatever, I'd just simply state that this person also works less. And if there's someone that objects to that or feels that it's not right, they can certainly voice that. And then we can decide if it's best for me not to do that or another member.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up, being upfront with Frank, appreciate you. So I think we need to, uh, to vote.
I wasn't sure if you did or if it's just a notification.
No, they have to vote to determine that you can be fair and objective, and Mr. Morris or anybody you know comes before the conservation.
So I'll move that.
Ultimately, just ultimately, it comes to you, you know, just like it comes to all of us. We're dealt with situations, and it's our, it's our job to make decisions whether we can be impartial or not impartial in this. And John's recused himself many times of things, and Sean and Marty and all of us have, so...
And certainly I would, if I felt that it couldn't be that way, or if someone else objected. You know, if we make it known and then someone objects, then we go from there.
I'll move that the appointing official, as required by General Lodge, Chapter 268, Capital A, Section 23B3, has reviewed the particular matter in that a person or organization could not unduly influence Frank Snow when he performed his official duty, his official duties on the Conservation Commission, has to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the appointee to perform his official duties objectively and fairly.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all the opposed? It is unanimous, four zero. Frank, thanks for coming in.
I appreciate it.
Frank, thank you very much.
Great job you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We have a discussion and vote on Glaze Road Traffic Regulation 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 Committee. Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director, is he... Nancy, is Kevin out there?
Yes, I'm calling for you.
Okay.
I didn't get it, I mean, I know, it's in...
No problem.
It's a rehash, but we can wait and leave on it.
Thanks. Early. Kevin, how are you?
Excellent, so...
Thanks for coming in.
Sorry, our TV was out.
Hello, Ron?
We had a schedule.
We are cruising.
Excellent.
Great. So we are talking about the Glaze Road?
Yep.
Do you want to give us a little bit of background on what's happened there and what we plan on doing there?
Sure, I could give you a ton of background, but I'll just...
Okay, we've read all the material and we're versed in it, so...
Okay. Basically, it's for the additional parking on Glaze Road. We've come up with a plan on what we could do to allocate some parking there. And we've also, some of the residents brought up some concerns with FEMA. We did speak with FEMA, and they did confirm that nothing was documented in the project worksheets or private parking spots. And we have that confirmed.
And it was not documented in the worksheet?
Correct. Correct. He was worded him out with naming one of the other individuals, so it was never reported. And that goes back to Sandy.
So let's talk about, one second, what has happened to that area? So FEMA came in, we had some problems with the wall.
FEMA had come in, we, the wall, issues with the wall was still ongoing. We haven't settled anything on that. We did settle the roadway. We just paved the entire roadway for about $99,000. And prior to that, we had a contract to replace the entire water line, straighten out all the surfaces down that road. And then we also went down Tilden Ave, Tilden Ave, to sort away the water service that goes down there, add additional fire protection hydrants and new water services.
So has any work been done on that wall?
Um, minimal, minimal, yeah, there hasn't been much work done at this time.
I'll open up support, any... Marty, any?
I mean, I've looked at the plans, you and I have talked about it back and forth, and what I can't get, what I can't see is this part of it. So I may believe there was parking spots there, I drove down, passed, you know, pulled up to basically the wall where the spots would be. And I tried to envision, first of all, getting out as somebody from Idaho, wherever. Now what do I do? I'm out of my vehicle. If I go to my, if I go backwards, I'm gonna be on private property. To go forward, it's gonna take me a while to be able to access the beach. So let's say I go down there and I do all of that, come back, get back in my vehicle, and I'm facing a dead end. What do I do now to go back to where I came from?
You mean turning around?
Correct. You turn in front of those homes.
Yes, the idea was to turn around and set it up so in front of the entranceway to the beach, it's a big wide open area that would allow a turnaround for that area.
I know what you're saying, and I know we kinda talked about that a little bit too. I just see it as being dangerous, whereas we could take those spots and probably put them over into the parking lot and just achieve the same thing with FEMA. That's my case, anyway. That's really all I had to say.
So Kevin, I'm just confused, where's the parking? So in other words, if we, if we're looking at Glaze Roads, I pass the postal office, now I come to the actual wall. The wall's like ten feet tall.
That's all the homes.
And then all of a sudden...
Got my laser pointer.
And then I get from there, that wall goes all the way probably for about 200 yards or so, and then...
It actually might be in that area right now.
All right. Now, if I go down further, there's the jog, the jog, and there's steps to go down. Now that's a private beach?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. So you're looking to put the four parking spaces, or I said, the town's looking to put four parking spaces closer to the, to the start of the wall?
To the higher wall.
Side of the wall, the opposite side.
Okay. And the beach access is to the minute beach, which is a little bit further up the road?
Correct.
So that is a private beach, so whoever parks in these four spots can't go to that beach? Is that correct?
Where the parking is, is on public, but...
Parking is on public, and part of that beach, I've heard, is public, it's private, it's messy in that area. Some of the streets go down, there's two sections of seawall, there's one that is public, and then there's one that's private that deviates in the location.
Okay, I'm confused, actually, I saw three sections. There's the wall section there, and then beyond the jog where the steps are, there's a smaller section, and then it gets even smaller when you get really close to the Adams State, if you will.
Correct, and that's private, that's a private seawall.
So which one's private? This private seawall, the little one, there are three of them?
The little one's a definite private seawall.
All right, got that. And how about the one in between?
The other one, it's going back and forth, it's not very clear. It probably needs a full title review to spin it up.
Find out whether it's, now...
Find out exactly where it is.
But the beach in front of that is private? Is that what I'm hearing from you, or we don't know?
I'm not exactly sure, I believe some...
Why would there be stairs placed at the end of the jog?
Excellent question.
Because I'm like, the stairs that were built were built to part of the original, the big wall, not the smaller wall. So there's access there, that's why I'm just curious. And as far as at the beginning of the wall, there's no access to the beach, at least where the beginning of it, okay.
It's just a high wall, it's like...
Johnny?
This has been going on for quite a while. I've flip-flopped on this, and still I'm a little undecided. I went down, it was as late as tonight, and I can recall when, after the first storm washed all of the road away, where Kevin had a long time coming to do all the infrastructure before they did the road. We talked about four and four spots. Right now, there is no parking signs throughout the seawall, it went down tonight. There's plenty of parking if you park parallel, and two cars can still pass each other, so no one can convince me of that and get out. So I went down there on Labor Day, and no one knew who I was, but I drove down there with my wife, and there's a lot of activity down there. There's kids out in the street playing, there's kids out in every public street playing. And, you know, that's great that they can, and, you know, but when a car comes along, you stop at a street hockey game and you have to wait till it go by. So, I was talking to Kevin as late as tonight. So if there's no parking there, and we go down next summer in July, and someone in the neighborhood's having a party, and they're parked there, they could be ticketed or towed. I, when I did go down there on Labor Day, I did see beyond Tilden Ave, people parked. I didn't go down quite that far, turned around where I could. So, you know, I've been tossing this around, like I said, one minute I think you people, you know, the majority of you people that live out there might have, you know, slices of heaven, and you don't want to give it up. But at the same time, it's worked for a long time, leave it the way it is. So I, you know, I'd like to hear maybe a little more from the public, you know, the residents. You know, I realize everyone in this room, 90% of people are probably from that neighborhood. But, you know, Frank, next meeting could have about 100 people from the West End saying, you know, I'd like to be able to go down to that beach if it's public, and, you know, you're not allowing me to. You can make the argument that the parking lot on Bailey's Causeway is not that far, but it is pretty far. Especially if you have a young mother with young kids and toys and stuff like that. So I'm kinda having a tough time on what to do, to be perfectly honest with you. Kevin's willing to do anything, we can put a yellow stripe down the road and be done with it. But, you know, I don't know if that's fair to the people in the West End, so... But, you know, I, you know, I realize it's a beautiful piece of property down there, and it's the end of the line. You don't have a lot of people going down there, just people that are lost or nosy, you know? You know? It's really it is. I kind of honestly, I'd like to hear a little more on it.
So, Sean, I appreciate your honesty, because that's what all of us are thinking. So, you know, I've been down there many times, I was down there probably two hours ago. It's a very, very wide street, you could, if you had to, put 20 spots there if you had to, coming off the wall this way. My question is, is it public access? You know, there's no sense in putting spaces down there if the public doesn't have access to it. So if the public does have access to it, and it is a public beach, then they should have someplace to park around that area, is my opinion. So, I kinda, I'm confused as to whether that's a private beach, and we're putting spots next to something that people shouldn't be using, or whether we're, it's a public beach and we should put spots next to it so people can use it. Can someone clear that up for me, or Kevin? One second, I'll get to all of you in a minute.
I haven't looked at those deeds in a while. I know there is a section definitely where the smaller wall is that goes from across the street over to the other side. I had met with some of the residents over there recently when we were cleaning the stairs this summer, and they said this section was a public beach, and I was under that assumption. I haven't gone back and done all the deeds. Just walking in, one of the residents said they thought it was all private beach, so I apologize for that.
No, no, it's fine, so that's, for me, that's a key point, for me.
We had a barrel over there that we were using to pick up trash, and then we also cleaned the stairs and opened it up to some of the rocks so that there was better access there. So that's, I didn't, I didn't research, which I should have, for once. And I researched it a while back, but I just don't remember exactly.
No problem. Okay, so why don't we open it up to the floor? I assume most of you people live in that area and have comments. So, a couple things, everyone gets to go once before anyone goes twice. Please be respectful and calm, and let's have a nice discussion on this. So who would like to speak first? Yes, sir. And just name your name and address.
My name is John Coleman, I live at 163 Glaze Road. The four parking places that you're talking about putting in are the far end of the high wall. There is, as far as you can get from what you're referring to is that stairway, which I always always have the impression that that stairway was built at the time that they put the wall there because they needed access to get onto that jetty, which is somebody else's property, probably the government or shore of engineers or something. Those stairs have been blocked with great big boulders in the 30 years that I've lived there. And going down where the low wall is and going further up towards where I live, I mean, I can show you my tax bill. I own that piece of land, it's on the other side of the road. So, that is private beach.
Way down where you live?
Right, on the last house before you get to the gate.
Okay.
And that's a smaller wall, not that one.
Right. Yes, sir.
I'm Tom McCall, 157 Glaze Road. I'm pretty familiar with that beach and who owns it. And who owns part, all that beach that it's beach right now is privately owned. It's on my deed, and I know that it's on my deed, and it's continuous with my land. There are other sections that the people own the beach, but it's not continuous with their property, so they have a separate tax bill. So that beach is all private, private property. And I know there's been cases, you know, I've read four or five cases that have been saving, you know, those that was, I think, Billy Bolger, my son was down the Cape, and they denied him access to a beach, and he came back and tried to change the law that he could actually walk in that beach and then we let him do it.
Okay. I'm not laughing at you, I was looking at Billy Bolger, Billy Bolger comment, with the movie coming out nowadays. Yes, ma'am?
That's the brat, 20 Tilden Ave. Those stairs, whether they're public or not, were cleared, but when you get to the bottom of the stairs, you can't get onto the beach. So you can encourage, you know, people to say, yep, you can get onto the beach, but probably 10-year-olds can do it. It's just not clear, unless you're planning on clearing it after every storm. It's kind of like at the bottom of all the stairs now, that they're just lock-covered. So, yeah, you can get down there, but you're not carrying kids and you're not carrying stuff. And what that leads to is there's a wooden staircase that members of the association pay for, that would say, hmm, I can go down those stairs. Well, that's the association's, it's on the private part of the beach, and we're paying for those stairs. So you can certainly encourage, and I believe it, if it were easy access, and I don't think anyone has ever told people to get off the beach. Nobody cares, it's just, you know, if you walk down there, you're more inclined, you know, you're fully and welcome to go onto the beach. So there's never, that I have ever heard of, is someone other than maybe a failed intoxicator or something, have been asked to leave the beach. So you can enable the parking, but you're not, you have not enabled access to the beach.
So, are you opposed to the parking or not opposed to it?
I'm opposed to the parking based on, primarily on process. But, I mean, I'm opposed to it just... to it just in terms of that you're adding parking and saying, "Sure, you can go down to, if this is public, you can go down to this public beach," but you're not really, there is no access. There's no, you know, I suppose it's the same way as the other stairs that are on the Minnet Beach wall, you know, I think there's one set of stairs that you can possibly get down, but for the most part. So unless you're planning on maintaining the low, like the sandy part of the beach, where there are huge boulders, you, there really isn't public access, and so there's just a conflict between you're saying, "Here, you can park here," and there's all sort of the noise of people being out there all, you know, at night, you know, going down there, but you're not addressing the fact that they don't have any place to go. So it's just the stairs, the stairs are, you know, we got them, which is great, you know, I think there are a few kids have gone, I've seen that kids gone downstairs, I've tried, and it's just not something I would do, unless I had to get onto that beach right now, if any other reason.
Yeah?
I just want to make a comment about the stairs, that's what I was trying to say before, where the spaces would be against the wall, it's still, even with the stairway that they're referring to, it's still, you know, a bit of a walk to get to that stairway, it's not close by. It would actually be easier probably to go backwards and go through the public access, you know? There's a public access way back closer to the post office, you know?
Right, over the, what do they call that area Shaun, the-
The rock?
Well, well-
Well, no, what's the area, between the beach and Minnet Beach?
The North Situate Beach.
The kids call it something, I'll think of it.
Parachi.
Yeah, the Glades, thanks. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jackie Fahy Sandell, I'm resident at 147 R Glades Road.
I know that the public can't hear you, so Kevin, can you just push that to the end of the, if you can speak up a little-
Peter Damon, Addison.
Please, if you can-
Sure. It's Jackie Fahy Sandell, it's Mount Home, 147 R Glades Road.
Okay, 147 R Glades Road?
Yes, so I guess my biggest concern is for the fact that people use the area right now, along the seawall, as basically a sidewalk, because the way it used to look is there was a yellow line, and people would walk along there. So as you walk up in the post office, you've got the sidewalk that comes right up to the tall seawall, and then you have what was the yellow area being the walk, a sidewalk. I guess my concern is if you put in four spots, you have people potentially walking to the far end to a private beach with no lifeguard, which we are on the hook for, as the homeowners on that beach, assuming, you know, erroneously that there's, you know, probably a lifeguard sees the Situate Beach. That's number one, my biggest concern, and then the other one is just that the sidewalk ends, and then these four spots start, is there going to be a sidewalk between plan, between the wall and this? Okay, because that wasn't clear to us.
He was actually on the other side, not to cut you off, during the last meeting, we showed the plan where the plan location was, and I think the residents brought, maybe Bill brought the plan back, so I thought you guys had it, but there was a, just a drawn sidewalk.
On the other side of the street?
On the other side of the street.
On the other side of the street, so that will, there will now be a sidewalk down there?
It's part of the whole-
... tomorrow, we're just going to try to see what's on there.
Turn around.
Across the street tomorrow, and then there's a sidewalk across the street to go back to the beach, anyway.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah Shaun?
So it's a sidewalk, it's going to be a painted sidewalk on the west side of the street?
Just painted, on the west side of the street, there were, you must buy keep wide, and it would go down, basically to Tilden Ave.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Halye McGlaughlin, 135 Glades Road, been there seventy-three years. I have disability, and that yellow line there gave us enough room to walk, and you can walk with the dog walkers, the bicycle riders, we're not tripping over each other, I have to walk every day. You can't imagine how many people walk and ride bikes down there and run, and there's a lot of them, and if we're on a sidewalk, and those people are trying to back out their cars, and I have to move every time I need a dog or a runner or a biker, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and I think you're not being fair to people with disabilities.
Well actually, what they're proposing is putting the sidewalk not near the parking at all, across the street, so that would give, excuse me, it would allow people access to be able to go. People in my neighborhood have to walk around with walkers, which I've seen, and also with disabilities, up in sand hills, and there are no sidewalks, they're in the middle of the road. So I mean, I've been down there, and that stretch is huge, it is like three lanes of travel, so I mean, they're proposing to put a sidewalk with paint, which I, my neighborhood would love to have, having extra area to walk, and that's brand-new asphalt, it's pretty flat down there. So you know, from my take on this, just from what I'm hearing, I think I'd be really happy to have, at least, shall we say, a reservation area for being able to walk the whole distance, regardless of this whole beach issue.
There's certainly-
People have to pull their cars out, back their cars out over the sidewalk, all, there's a whole lot of people-
Do that even if you put an actual sidewalk in, you go down the sidewalk on Turner, or you go down the sidewalk on, on-
Any street.
Any street, down on Oceanside or Turner, they have driveways, you have to stop, I mean, that's the reality of a sidewalk anyways.
But the yellow line was big enough so everybody could go without any trouble.
So I'll just, I'll just, there's certainly nothing against disabled people in this whole process, so we'll figure out what the right thing to do is.
Tony, one quick comment?
Yes.
So the idea, and I'm not sure if I'm understanding, but to pull out of a spot on Turner Road or something is one thing, but to pull out on Glades, you have to make a U-turn. That's the difference, you can't go straight, you have to make a U-turn.
Out of your parking lot?
Yes, where do you go?
Out of your driveway?
No, 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 if you're parked in a parking spot on Glades, the sidewalk's on the left side, how do you go Shaun? You go towards the Adams Estate, you have to make a U-turn.
Yeah, we all know it's a dead, yeah, but if you're coming out of a driveway, you just do like anybody else.
No, no, I'm saying if they're pulling out of those spots-
Yeah, out of those spots, yes.
You've got an imaginary sidewalk, which is a line, you're not going to hit a curb, you're going to make a U-turn, and there's a good chance you're going to go over that line, that's all I'm just trying to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Bill Graham, 157 Tilden Ave. Parking's been banned on Glades Road from 99 to 170 for over sixty years, and there's a reason for that. This section of Glades Road is a narrow stretch, you think it's wide, but it's actually narrow. It's a quarter mile long, and it has approximately seventy-five residents there, in that quarter mile. There's a lot of activity. That area next to the seawall is about sixteen feet wide, and that's used as a recreation area, as a walking trail, as a biking trail, they push carriages, they go back and forth to the beach with their beach chairs and all the equipment that they need for the beach. It's a safety area, it's out of the mainstream of the traffic, because it's tucked in next to the seawall. If you put the sidewalk on the west side, you're going to be in the direct path of all the cars that do park along there, there's like fifteen houses that park along there, and they all have multiple towers, coming and going at different times, not all at the same time, but they're back in and they pull in, and it's a lot of traffic. The children in the area use that area, as you saw, as a playground area. They do their street hockey there, they shoot some hoops, they like catch, they do their bicycles, skateboards, whatever, and that, again, is a protected area. The area is used all year long by the people of Situate and maybe other communities, but in the middle of the winter, there's people jogging down that road. Why? Because it's a protected area, and to put parking in there wouldn't reduce the safety factor that we have down there. The town of Situate is very much in favor of walking trails. In the last, probably ten years, they've spent $2,650,000 on putting walking trails in, from North Situate down to Gianna Road, the Driftway, from the dump area all the way down to the harbor, the Harbor Walk, around the ring of the harbor, from the town pier all the way up to the lighthouse, they've done it on Countryway, are they going to do it on Countryway for $745,000? Tilden Road, multiple use trail, Hall of Street sidewalks, Starkbridge Road sidewalks. Here we have a walking trail, a sidewalk, a playground area, and you're looking to take it away when we've spent billions of dollars providing sidewalks in recreation areas. It just doesn't make sense. Any traffic that goes down there looking for those parking spots, as you said Marty, is going to have to go down and make a U-turn down at the end, whether they do it at 139, or they go all the way down into 166 and make the turn down there, which is tighter, but many people do that. It's just not right for us to do it. As a neighborhood, we reject the idea of this parking, it's not necessary. The second parking lot on Bailey's Causeway is the exact same distance to the North Situate Beach as the proposed parking that you're talking about. It's no more of a convenience going down there than it is on Bailey's Causeway. So I would ask you to not allow this parking. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? I saw your hand up a minute ago.
I was just going to ask Kevin, Susan Graham, 157 Tilden Ave, in the area where those four spots are supposed to go, that's the jetto off of Glades that goes in towards the wall, right?
Correct.
That's the narrowest spot on Glades Road. When there's parking there, across, in the area of 100 Glades, you literally in the summertime, you have to stop to allow the parking on the other, the traffic on the other side to come by. That's the narrowest area.
Where the parking is proposed?
Yeah, yes.
No.
No.
No, I think you might be off a little bit.
I mean-
Isn't this, this is the jet?
Yeah.
Okay, isn't this where the parking was proposed?
Yes.
The jet's way up further.
This is the narrowest part of Glades Road.
And we don't need more traffic down there, is what you're saying?
No, it really is the narrowest, and we have a new resident who's taken grass out even further, it's made it very tight on here. Sorry. But anyway.
Just right prior to the parking, that's where, it's kind of like a funnel or a bottleneck, and then when the wall opens up, that's where the parking is proposed.
Right by the Deuce of Godfrey.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir. Behind you, then you.
Okay, I just have one question.
What's your name and address?
Bill's Greg, 139 Glades Road, you keep saying-
I can ask you just to keep the talking down, ma'am?
You say four spots, and on the map it had fourteen, so then we've got two different things going on here.
Say that again?
On the map that was supplied, you have four public spots and ten more spots, what are we talking about, four spots and fourteen?
This was on the stairs, the neighborhood, where it has the fourteen, okay.
I'd just like-
So I'm going to ask everyone, if we can just tone it down a little bit, keep this under control, not you sir, you're fine, I don't think there's fourteen spots, there's four spots, is that correct Kevin?
Correct, it's four, it was originally voted, it showed, it gave from one address to the other, none of those, that address was fourteen spots, or it was, if we're talking about four spots, whoever the fourteen, those four spots could be, if the fourteen was fourteen spots, that's-
So, point of information, so as part of this process, there was a traffic rules and regulations, what was their recommendation? How many spaces? Did they recommend parking or no?
The parking was recommended, it went on, it wasn't, we couldn't clarify on how these spots.
I thought, I saw four, so I can sort of understand why folks might be a little confused, is that I thought traffic sign recommended four.
Traffic rules do not have any, yes.
All right, so they recommended four, to the board, who has the final say? So really, in terms of what you're discussing, it's four?
It's four.
Okay, it's just one, all right, so I hope that answers your question.
So just four spots is what we're talking about tonight? Did you have anything else?
No.
Yes, sir.
Andrew Connel, 145 Glades Road, I'd just like to know what the proposed use of emergency vehicles is, where parking is as of right now, as a fire lane, where the proposed parking spots are supposed to be, as a fire lane as of right now, I just want to know if there's any kind of, trying to move the fire lane.
Good question. So I assume traffic rules and regulations must have measured that out, and four spots don't use up all of the-
Correct, and the fire department was at traffic rules.
Right, so the four spots is only going to take us thirty feet, forty feet down that thing, so there's probably eighty feet still to go, that would continue to be a fire lane, I would imagine. Yes, ma'am?
Deborah Mead, 131 Glades Road, this seems kind of silly to me to have, or even to talk about four spaces on Glades Road, you can bring all kinds of traffic down there in the summertime looking for four of these spaces, it doesn't make any sense. That area, I have the luxury of sitting on my deck and watching the traffic go by in the summertime. That, you can't imagine how many cars will ride my house and turn around, constantly, all day long. It happens in the winter as well, but mostly in the summer, because people are just wondering what's down in that area. It says, "No turn around down the end of the street," it says, "Not a clear way," but you still get that constant traffic. And they don't come down slowly, they come down in a pretty good flip, and now if you're going to have four spots, they're going to come down here looking for more spots to park. It just seems silly to even talk about it, bring all that traffic down.
So let me ask you this, do you want us to put a sign to say only for residents only? I mean, it's a public road, and there's no way of turning around other than you have to turn around.
But you only have four spots, it doesn't make any sense to do that, to bring even more traffic down, you're looking for parking spots for the beach.
I understand that, I think the first issue I want to have clarification is whether or not there's any public access, public beach that's down there. I hear down at the Farming, it's not, it's deeded, based upon some testimony here today that it's deeded to people of private right. I'm curious about the stairwell, I'm curious to see why there's a stairwell. The wall itself, I'm not even sure, is that a public wall, is that a private wall, if it's public, and what's the land behind it? Generally, that means it's town land, which would make sense, that if you're going to have four parking spaces, to me, it would be better to put them closer to, I guess, Tilden Ave, because that's where the stairs are, fix the stairs so people have access that they're not going to fall down, and then put four parking spaces there, because if it's a town-owned beach, or a town-owned land, people should have a right to have access to be able to get there.
But we're also getting, we should be talking about, and you tell lifeguard on duty, and we should be talking about maintenance of the beach, which we do now as a community, we do now.
And that's a valid point, but I'm going to tell you right now, Justin Doris is in my neighborhood, they pulled the lifeguards, because one, we didn't have the funds, and two, we didn't have enough lifeguards, beginning of August, so Sand Hills didn't have lifeguarding, and doesn't have it at some of the other beaches, which is Museum Beach, doesn't have one, Lighthouse doesn't have, Lighthouse Beach doesn't have it. So I agree with you, that's an issue that we can address in the future if it's a public beach. I think the first thing we need to understand is whether there's actually public land owned by the town, and if so, then it begs the question, does the town, people in the West End, or elsewhere, have a right to have access to it? You know, if there's no public beach, and it's all privately deeded, then I think your points are well taken. The issue, with all due respect, Mr. Graham, kids shouldn't be playing in the road, I don't care whether it's the only area for them, that's the last place for kids to play in any reservation area, because cars are going down there, as this lady just said, they're going fast, they're going slow, they shouldn't be in the road playing, and I don't think anybody would agree on that, at least I wouldn't. But I do realize it's a very wide area.
Excuse me for a second, excuse ma'am, all the chatter there goes over the mic, and no one at home can hear you, so if you can just keep it down, that'd be great.
So I realize it's a wide area, it's much wider than most roads, that's like I said to you, I went down last week, drove down, stopped, went down the steps, took a look at them, went down further to try to get a better sense of the lay of the land, so to speak. It's pretty darn wide, it's wider than a lot of the smaller roads around.
We came down last week, and I understand we came down and lived, and it's extremely disgusting, that's the opposite of when you came down logic, it was dead quiet.
It was dead quiet, people were, and I totally respect that, so that's why I'm trying to get a sense of what's the public access, whether it is. I do understand, in the future, we talked about this back in- I do understand, in the future, we talked about this back in May, June, we're talking about trying to cede the whole entire Minnet Beach, pushing it out, you know, for purposes of protection of like 100 yards.
Beach nourishment.
Uh, beach near re-energement, which is gonna go, we're proposing that. I'm gonna tell you, if you've got 100 yards of sand, not necessarily in this section, but Minnet, going all the way down, you're gonna have a lot of people going down there, and those four spots are nothing. They're gonna, they'll walk miles just to get to that beach, because that beach will be the best beach in town. So I say, my feeling right now is, is that if that happens, and we decide not to do any public access at this point, or shall we say overturn our vote from last year, I can tell you, in the future, I certainly would be, because it's gonna be a really nice beach in the future for everybody in town to go to. But in the meantime, I do, I would like to know, you know, we're not gonna make that decision tonight, I don't think, it depends on what the board wants, but I think we need to know what ownership rights are down there.
We'll check that. I can address that, John. Sorry, Tom. We wouldn't want to park any of those stairs anyways, because that's a turnaround, and in that area, it's shaded like that when we designed it, because if a fire engine had to turn around or a school bus or something, that gets a turning radius. By putting cars up in that section, you're interfering with that, that's a lot...
So is that where the bus turns around?
A bus could turn around or a fire engine. It's not a classic, it's not a classic down, public sack, but if you had a large vehicle to turn around, so I just, we wouldn't avoid it.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak before? Yes, sir.
George Eaton, 131 Glades Road. For parking, isn't this one that you catch spaces, gets you overflow of oil or the acid that's leaked? So it just runs right down into the swamp, or into the ocean, or through our yachts?
What happens with the cars that you guys park on...
Right now.
On the... No, no, but you guys park your cars.
Right.
What happens to the oil and stuff that leaks from those?
Well, we don't have oil leaks. We don't know if we can pull down there with cars. It's allowed through our yachts.
So, everyone's had a chance, I'll go to, yes, ma'am?
Allison Sprague, 139 Glades Road. And I just wanted to mention that Richard Murray, a past selectman, had suggested the public access bike rack in one of those areas. I mean, I had made pictures, just sitting up on my deck at 139, and I share these with you. People on bikes, and then a drop-off area. They're doing it all the time, drop-off gear, fishing, they go out on the vetting. Also, people walking in this area, as everybody has said for years, it has been sort of the spot to walk. This is drop-off. And baking carriages and people walking, and I just took four pictures, but it's just constant, and they do stay against the sidewalk, because that's the safest area. But you might, if it's public access you're looking to do, you might wanna think about some bike racks, because there seem to be people coming down there all the time.
Okay. So I'll let the two of you speak, and then we'll wrap it up. Yes, ma'am?
Ethra Bradigan, 20 Tilden Ave. So this started in 2013 as a result of the FEMA requirement, and I just wanna be clear just from what Kevin's saying, the FEMA requirement for the four spaces is now off the table. Is that, is that your understanding?
There's nothing written that says that. There was a verbal...
Right, and I gave you the contact information for people in FEMA, so if it's, so I guess as long as that's off the table, what we're talking about is something that kinda got on the agenda, that nobody even knew how these extra 14s or extra 10 spaces kinda got on there. So nobody even has a, why did this come up?
So let's...
We're talking about, you know, no, no, we're talking about, I'm sorry that your, Mr. Dan, your neighborhood doesn't have this huge wide area, but we're talking about ruining something that is a good, it's a good thing, and so that we can put four spaces in. You can't put the sidewalk or walkway in behind all those cars. It's not driveways we're talking about. Every house probably parks two cars on either side of their front stair. So we're talking about, you know, basically, you've got, as Colleen said, you've got like a 15 to 20 foot walking area that just, everybody is all over, and when cars come, we all move into it. You know, it's, it's, I don't know what the police department has said about it, but I'm not certain whether we've ever had any traffic fatalities on that area, you know? I could be mistaken, but I don't think that we have a problem with people kind of just basically wandering down there. And we're not talking about people in the neighborhood, the entire town uses that area. And we're trying to make something that, although it's not necessarily attractive when you look at this huge wall, it's a great area, and we're trying to make it look like Front Street or some other area of town that doesn't have this advantage. So, yeah, we can put four spaces in so the guy from Ohio can see where his money went, or the excess parking from, the only people who are gonna park there are the people going to Minnet Beach, Big Beach. There's parking all the way from the post office area, that's all non-sticker parking, so there's probably 20 spaces there that's not enforced, because I think it might have been signs there at some time. So there's 20 non, there's 20 public parking spaces already there, and you're trying to add four more, and basically, now people have to kind of walk out into the middle of the road to get back into the walkway.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. People walk all over the place in this town. They wa, if anyone here lived by the Lighthouse, there's hundreds of people all day long walking around there. So you just happen to live in another beautiful part of Situate where people walk, and ride bikes, and push strollers, and do everything else. That's the biggest road I've seen in Situate. That's clear, that's huge. So you're missing the whole point here. If there's public access to that beach, then the public has to have access to it and places to park. That's what I think our concern is here. If it's a private beach, like Mr. Dan he just said, then why would we put parking spaces there? So that's, no. No, 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 no. Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. If I let you respond, you can respond, but right now. So that's what's going on here. All this other stuff that you're talking about, really, I don't even know where we're going on. If there's public access, then the public has to, has to have ability to go there. I understand you live in a very nice area, you've got a big street in front of you, you like the way it is, you don't want it to change. I get it. Right? And if, if there's no public access there and it's all private way, then, then keep it that way. If there's public access, then I think we've gotta evaluate where the parking spots can go there, so, as Sean said, someone from the West End can park down there and utilize that beach. So anything outside of that argument, I think is just not what we're thinking. So, sir, I'll let you have the last word, and then we'll wrap it up.
That's, that's a private beach. You know, there's no way around it, it's a private beach. It's deeded, it's all deeded.
We'll find out. Great. Okay.
So I would, I would suggest that we not vote on anything tonight, and take a look and find out exactly the ownership rights beyond the wall there, to ascertain whether there is a pub, public access, or whether there should be public access, whether it's publicly owned land or not. And if it's not, then I think it goes to what these people are saying, then why would you put four parking spaces there? And the lady who mentioned bike racks, there's no need to put bike racks if there's no right to a public access there. I'd rather put the bike racks closer to the Minnet, the post office, you know, the, the actual beach opening, than to have people go there and walk down. But I need to know one way or the other. That's, that's my predicament.
You don't have public access.
This gentleman says you don't, so I'm trying to figure out one way or the other, because if there is, then it changes, you know, as Tony said, I absolutely agree. If there's public access, public beach, or public, the town has an access to it, there's gotta be a right for people to go there. Not from Ohio, but just other people in Situate who can go park the car there.
That's what I meant, was the public does use that area in Situate, people in Situate with children, tons of them.
Anyone have, everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. So Kevin, can you try and find out what...
We'll, we'll...
We'll try and find out the D E C if there's...
I apologize about that.
That's okay.
So we're not putting any paint down, any parking spaces, you know, at this point, until we find out what exactly is beyond the wall. Does that make sense?
Yep. Perfect sense.
Thank you.
All right.
1980.
Nancy, why don't you come up and see if you can get through?
Oh, yeah. You could just tell them, ma'am.
Excuse me.
Why is that not public access?
If you're gonna stay...
I don't get it.
We'd love to have you stay. Great. Okay, Nancy.
Good evening. What we had before you tonight was to award the contract for the integrated financial management system. The town has gone up to the vice now, once back in April, and then again, we went up this fall.
Can you wait one second?
Sure.
Great. Thanks.
Unfortunately, I cannot pick the lottery number, but I managed to pick the bid proposal date in order to companies that were supposed to be the original entities. So our, we decided to carve out the bid for the first go-around because of that issue, and then on the second go-around, the same two companies did, one of them is now part of another company, and the original one. At this time, we're asking that this be tabled, we can all discuss a little bit further on the special town meeting articles, because there are some funding issues we're looking at for our choice. So that's our...
Anyone opposed to tabling this?
So moved.
Great. I'll send this out.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, now we'll talk about our liquor license policy. Tricia, thank you, you, um, I saw, hold on, let me find it.
Age 50.
Age 50, right? So we talked about this at our last meeting, there's a liquor license that's becoming available on Front Street, I believe, and we really didn't have a formal policy in terms of how we reallocate that liquor license, and we asked Tricia to kinda put some guidelines together based on our previous discussion. She did that. I know we've all read it. It seems pretty straightforward to me. Any discussion from the board on this?
Question I had is, this is for liquor license or liquor license and alcoholic beverages? Because if you're dealing with liquor license, when and if a beer and wine license comes into play, this only really addresses the liquor license. So I was wondering whether we just put, like, the issuance of regulation of liquor license and/or beer and wine? Make it more of an encompassing, more liquor license and beer and wine? I don't know.
Yeah, it's your, it's your draft policy.
Because I was going through, there's something else here, you said beverage license, alcohol, and it says, third, there's no legal right to an alcoholic beverage license, and that's what I was trying to say, do you wanna put them both, generally, or I don't know?
So there's two types, there's liquor license, there's restaurants, and then there's beer and wine.
Right, right.
So whatever words encompass all three of those, I think?
Or just say, if you, maybe we just say alcohol beverage licenses, which include liquor, you know, something like that.
Alcohol-related licenses.
That's all. I didn't have a chance to, I was on the computer, so I didn't have a chance to write it, modify it, because I like the paper, but I was just thinking, if you just reworked the language, that's all. I'm happy to do it next time.
Did you want to report to the board that we are in possession of the license as of yesterday?
Yes.
We received official notification that it's been surrendered.
Okay. Any other comments on this?
Can we vote it with that change?
We can, if we want to.
That, I'd love to...
Any comments?
Nope. That's the only change I saw.
Okay, so you documented the change, just in the initial, say it's all encompassing liquor licenses?
Yep, so you can vote it as amended.
Right. Someone wants to make a motion as amended, then we can do that.
Move to accept the liquor operational policy of Board of Selectmen 55-15 as amended, pertaining to the applicable liquor and alcohol beverage licensing.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I for zero in support.
So Mr. Chair, just for the folks watching at home, the new policy that the board just adopted as amended requires the town to place an advertisement in the newspaper advising the general public that there's a liquor license available, and so that'll establish when the application deadline will be due, and application information is always obtainable in the selectman's office.
When will that go in the paper, since we got the license?
As soon as the staff is able to do it, so hopefully next week, but I will be, I will be away, so it might, and Sheila's away, so it might be...
So within the next, within a reasonable period, it'll get in the paper, and then as this thing says, there's a number of different criteria that we determine where the license will be possibly given.
If, if anywhere.
If anywhere.
Yep, absolutely.
And the process is that they go to the ABCC website and complete the new, the licensing application.
And that'll be in what we put in the newspaper. Yes.
Great. Did we vote?
Yes.
We did. Great. Okay. The next item is 8:15, special town meeting items. So discussion vote, so why don't we just close the warrant to start?
I'll move to close the warrant for November 2nd, 2015, special town meeting at 8:28 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. Tool. Further discussion? Hold on for one second. Yes?
Yeah, Steve Bjorkland, here's your, close your warrant, student.
Address, please.
Captain Daniel, which field lane? You're moving to close the warrant now, and then you're gonna talk about articles that have gone on the warrant?
Yes, that have already been submitted.
Okay, so this reserve spots for certain articles.
Everything that has been given to us up to this moment is on the warrant right now.
But the board will vote whether or not it goes on the warrant. Right now, just because we have requests for warrant articles does not guarantee it's gonna be on the warrant.
That answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. But, so, there's a motion to close a warrant, and there's a second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now we have a draft warrant. Tricia put together a draft warrant for us to look at, and then there are, do you wanna go through all the, what's your plan?
What I would suggest is we have three individuals to speak to specific articles, so I would take those three, and then we can go over the remainder requested articles, and I can close the loop on all that for you, but we have a number of folks here, so I prefer they go first.
Great. And I am going to change the order a little bit, because Mr. Snow stayed to talk about, to be here for one of them, and I know he has stuff that he has to go do, so I'm gonna have the land swap up on Clap Road just go first.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you want to...
Just give us your name and address.
Okay. Gene DuVoyzen, 55 Clap Road, and my wife and I, and we are the owners of land that is currently under 61A that we were presenting to the town for first right of refusal. The concept came up of a land swap for it, and as far as I understand, there was some And as far as I understand, there was some, uh, confusion as far as where the land was located at the last one. So we've put together a few Google Earth images for you. Keep them in the...
Yeah, thank you.
And I have smaller... Give to you.
So let me, uh, let me just give a quick little summary.
Thank you.
Mr. Duvoisin and I have spoken a couple of times on this matter. He owns some property in the West End, and, uh, um, and he is considering developing it. And he, we spoke about the opportunity of a land swap, and I said, bring it before the board and let's talk about it. Um, it abuts the Damon property that we bought with CPC funds. When was that, two years ago, one year ago?
Last, two years.
Last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Feb, April.
So it's, it's kind of in that area of town that we're interested in, you know, the Aqua Farm, what have you. So, um, here he is before us to kind of go over the option that he's giving the town.
Uh, one of the confusions about sixty-one A, I said, we should talk to the town and offer the way into the town. My wife and I wish to consolidate our land at this time of our life. It's a lot to take care of. Um, and there are no clear guidelines on who we're supposed to talk to. So that's why I talked to the chairman about this and said, who do I talk to? I talked to Mr. Snow also, to try to get an idea. And that's why I'm here today. So I think why I'm here, and you can qualify with any questions, is to clarify where the land is, um, what our intentions are for it, and, um, you can go from there.
So do you want to point out what the two pieces of property are that you're looking to swap?
Uh, sure. You have a diagram in front of you, and this land right here, which is, uh, the town land, which is part of the Damon trust, abuts our house property. Uh, we are on Clap Road. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-eight, and plan on living there hopefully a while longer, too. Um, so this land right next to our house, um, would be swapped two point nine acres for this land in the back, which is eight point nine acres. This abuts conservation, this conservation way goes into this. That is off of, it's Colonel Mansfield Estates, and then it's First Parish right here. And as you can see, there's nothing out here. I don't think this land has ever really been touched. It might have been logged a little bit at one time. I don't believe that the Damon property has been. We have just, uh, over the past nine months hired Morse Engineering to go in and, um, survey the land. And this is a more accurate one. It's fairly close. This is taken off of Google Earth. So it's, it's similar, but it's not exact. And I'm just presenting this to you not as an exact map, but just for reference, so that we can talk about.
And that's the more accurate drawing?
Yes. This is a surveyor's drawing. We've bothered to go in there, um, and have it accurately surveyed. They've also reestablished that, uh, the line of the swamp, as you can see right here. It's usually on the town documents, just a straight line. But there are stone walls, and there are some very clear markers, uh, delineating where that land. This land is, I must, might say, is not swampland. This is up, this land goes steadily up, like where all these properties are. This land goes steadily uphill. Frank had talked about that, because he's grown up a little bit and hunted through there. But it's very high all the way through here. It's, uh, quite a bit above the swamp elevation. Should I leave behind the desk?
I think she'll get you wherever, wherever you want. She's expert at that. So explain, so it's two point four, two point nine acres that abuts your property for about not eight point nine acres over here? And then what's the green?
So this is just a little bit different look. It's blown up a little bit. This is current land right here. This is part of this Damon land that I would like to swap for. And we just took a, kind of a very simple line in order to divide the properties from there. So the, you know, we, this land is currently under sixty-one A, and, um...
Which is under sixty-one A?
Both properties are under sixty-one A.
And the property above the blue?
The property above the blue, we have many other old deeds going back to the seventeen and eighteen hundreds for additional land that we have not taken the time to survey. Any land that is not abutting our house, we would give those deeds to the town along with it. We have not spent the money to have a detailed survey of all that other land. Some of that other land, uh, it is believed is more in this area. There's, um, several other deeds that we would be including with it, but this is the only area we specifically, at this time, had Morse Engineering survey.
But you discolored the one above it, so you think that there's a likelihood that you may have that land right above it as well?
Yes. And we were approached by a developer many years ago, who was interested in developing the land. We were not interested in doing it and turning it down. But this, this would be, um, that type of configuration. That's Conservation Way, and that's proposed house lots from there.
You said developer. I'm just wondering, is there anybody in here? Who's that developer?
It was the developer. He developed a, um, a large property in, in, in very large golf, or something.
Yeah. The first question is, so what you'd like to swap with us is in yellow, and part of that, was that what we just acquired?
Yes.
With the Damon property?
Yes, this is part of the Damon property, this piece of yellow.
Okay.
Right there.
My question is to Mr. Toomey. Kim, could we do this? We just acquired this by CPC. Can we already?
Uh, it's Article forty-nine, and it takes an act of the legislature to...
Similar to what we're doing.
Oh, and we did a, um, a looting store.
Right.
No, no. So, so, uh, land acquired by CPC for conservation is an Article ninety-seven?
Would be.
Okay, so, yeah, so that makes the hurdles. But we're still waiting for the last one.
I gotta ask you before I can get all my questions. Why do you want that? Why do you want the yellow? Why not sell the blue to CPC? Because Frank, and I think it's great, but we acquired the Damon property, so nothing would change, so...
Part of what, um, this land abutting our house, people frequently walk into our backyard, because this is very open area, as you can see. And, uh, we'll be having breakfast on the weekend, and people come walking into our backyard and go, hi. And I go, can I help you? And they go, no, we're just walking the town land. And so that there's a lot of traffic of people coming through and staking into the town land. And part of why we moved up there was for privacy. This additional land was not considered at all at the time that the Damon land was acquired.
So he's, so you're trying to expand your immediate footprint of your property, and you were going to develop this land on the west side of it, and...
That, the blue land will be offered for sale.
Yeah.
Duvoisin, is that how you say it? Mr. Duvoisin? Um, that's okay. No, um, so the swap that you're looking for between the two point nine-two acres and the eight, or basically nine acres, are you maintaining the restriction, seeking to maintain the restriction that you're going to gain from the town, from the Damon property? Or are you seeking to extinguish the conservation restriction that's on it?
This land would no longer be under conservation land with all those restrictions. We would probably continue to maintain it under sixty-one A, so that there are things we could do on it, like log, or we could plant things on it, or things like that.
Now, the reason why I ask is because, um, and I don't know. I don't know what, you know, without looking at your property and seeing potentially what could be yielded, whether it by you or by somebody in the future if you sell it. Because no offense, if you're going to take on land, you want to maximize as best you can for when you sell it in the future, whether it's for you and your wife or for your family. I'd be concerned to find out what could potentially be developed just on your property alone. The reason I ask that is because while we're, the town could benefit from nine acres, the question I have here is, how, what's the potential to really develop? I know you showed us a plan. There's four, four homes, or maybe eight, maybe it was two complexes per...
They're ten.
They're ten, okay. I'm not really sure whether that's feasible or not. I know you said it's uplands. Um, I haven't seen anything that shows the topo map, and I know Frank will probably say it is uplands. But I know Greg hasn't done any, um, schematics as to the elevations. And, um, I'm only saying that because, you know, I just want to make sure that, yes, nine acres is well worth conveying over three acres. The other question I have is, is that when this land was taken, um, through CPC, we had two points of access to it. And obviously now, we're narrowing it down to one. And I'm not really sure...
You'll still have two points of access.
Well, Conservation Way, but if it's as high as you say, I don't think you're going to be able to put some kind of trail, roadway to get, where are people going to come in to go to? Are they going to go from Conservation Way, or are they going to come from Clap Road?
There's a, uh, there's a cul-de-sac right here, and this is a straight through and rise up into that area. This area right in, hardly from, right in this area is the highest of the land. This area here is similar to, um, Conservation Way land height, and also where the Hoffman property just subdivided when we built the house. So this plain right through here, whereas our back field, right in this area is the highest land as far as I know in Sitka.
And the reason why I'm saying it is this, because I think if I had answers to these, I would wholeheartedly support you on it. But I, I kind of need these answers. And the reason why I'm saying that is, I'm not sure whether we can get all these answers, not necessarily from you or from your attorney or from your engineer, but I need to look at it from the town's perspective, which I'd like the town to take a look at it. Because if that's what I'm thinking is a really great deal, then I'm wholeheartedly behind it. My question then would be, is this something that needs to be done at this special town meeting? And if not, could you wait until our annual in April? Because then the town, it's the board itself, I would be saying, I'm happy to put it up as, as an article going forward.
I, I think that as far as the data on the elevations, the town paid Morse Engineering to survey this entire land, and your topos as far as the elevations and all that, on the abutting land right here, right there. So that's a fairly clear, um, that's fairly clear. My sense is that things do take quite a bit of time, and if we wait until the next town meeting, at that point, it could be voted down, and it could be, we could be nine months further along, or it could be delayed to another one.
Our last, our last experience, we actually told the same land swap, because they tried to come in at special a year ago, and we told them, hold off. And it passed. The, the benefit was the board got behind them a hundred, a hundred percent, I think, in doing it. And I'm only saying that because I'm like, I, you know, I don't want to miss an opportunity for the benefit of the town. But I do feel like we ourselves need to do some due diligence to ensure that what we're swapping is actually a good thing. And, and I, I know, I'm not saying that what you're proposing is a bad thing. I just need to make sure we do it on our end. And you're probably both saying, absolutely, how could you turn this down? I just, so I'm, I'm a little, you know, maybe these answers can be fleshed out in the next, um, month. But I'm just saying right now, I just have some, I need questions answered from the town officials, you know, whether it's from the building inspector, Neil Duggan, um, through the, um, planning department, you know, things of that nature, that's all.
Are you, could I interject to you?
Let's see if anyone else, Marty, you have any question?
No, I'm good.
Sean, any?
No, right now.
Okay. Yeah.
So...
Just your name and address.
Frank Snow, uh, chair of conservation. Mr. Duvoisin approached me, maybe in August, um, asking if this might be a possibility. I met with him briefly. He didn't have it mapped out quite as clearly as this at that time, and I explained to him that we'd obviously need to get more information. As you, John, were saying, it seemed like a reasonable thing to consider. This, you know, one to three acres, basically, is what he's offering. Seemed like, why not at least take a look at that? But sort of, Pat Galvin and I have discussed it. I mentioned it briefly to the commission. We had hoped to maybe look at more of the detail, but the commission's been extremely busy between different projects that we have going on, and Pat and I haven't had a chance to look at this either. Um, I, I think that most of this is probably upland, um, from my travels through theirs over the years. But it's certainly something that we'd want to confirm. Frank, so...
It was him in the past, and I thought it, maybe it was CPC, but there was like a GPS. I don't have it with me. It's at my office, but it showed...
Western Survey did a weapons delineation around the whole south swamp.
That might be it. Okay.
And I think most of the engineers have that, and probably that's what Morse used to develop this. It's, it probably should at least be looked at. Some of the old ribbons is still there. Pat and I could take a look at that. So it, there was, there's a couple more of those concerns that we probably need to work out. Right now, the piece of property that, um, that the town would relinquish, if it can be done, because that was a question I had, um, early on, is that feasible once we buy it with CPC money? And as Mr. Toomey pointed out, it is, but it's not without some, some effort. We, the commission had pointed on a parking area in that yellowish area. That's where, where we thought that we would, um, bring in a road and create a parking area in that spot. There's another little bit of frontage further down Clap Road, west on Clap Road, but it's more of a hill with floods. So we'd have some concerns if we were trying to create access to the Damon property there. On the other hand, if there's frontage off of Conservation Way, that might be a great spot to access the property. If the land swap goes through, um, with the Bartlett Field piece of property, the access to the piece that the town would acquire is closer to Mr. Duvoisin's land than it is to the other, the other piece. So people are walking any kind of a loop from, say, the town forest, would have to come out on Clap Road, walk along Clap Road, and then re-enter the Damon property further to the west. So we sort of have the same thoughts as you do. We'd like to take a look at it a little bit more. Preserving more land certainly seems like the right thing to do. A lot of his property, um, is in the, uh, water protection area, or, or it's a drainage area that goes into, um, the Harrenbrook piece, because all of that pitches in that direction. It goes to a stream that's off First Parish that works around the back of the water tower and right down Green Bush. So it's certainly a piece that's, um, probably more worth protecting. The piece that's in yellow might actually drain more towards, towards the other side. So it, I think it has good merit, but we need to look at it as well. I have the same concerns that you do. I know that we should get this moving. It's been very patient, waiting. Unfortunately, a number of issues before the commission have taken precedent in that. But we'd certainly like to pursue it, um, if, you know, if everybody seems that it's a good idea.
I, I think it is. Don't get, I'm, I'm not trying to be the, the wet blanket. I just want to make sure that we, again, when everything's said and done, we're the ones that are going to be on the hook for, if something's, you know, with all due respect, five, 10 years, and it turns out that somebody throws a forty B on your property after you had sold it. I mean, I hate using that, because that's kind of a scare tactic. Or that's it.
My property, somebody could throw a forty B on it right now. So it's not like, the yellow piece of land is not changing what we're going to, how we can develop our property. It's not gonna, I don't even know if the yellow piece of land is perfect. So in terms of due diligence, can I do perks on it then? It's not my intent, but in terms of changing, we only have three, six, six acres. So this is not going to significantly change whether or not we can develop it.
No, but it can, it certainly could augment it. In other words, the, the way that you come in, and I, again, to develop it, you're going to have to come in with a road. And I'm just saying from my own experience, it's just, now we're giving you more land to develop, and it gives you a lot more, instead of shoehorning things. I'm not saying you are. Or I'm just saying, I have to look at it from the town's perspective and say, we're giving you three acres, have we just, just the same way we did it with the people on, um, on, um, Jack Livingston, which was, you know, the small versus the, the small land that we, that, I think it was an acre and a half, almost two acres, compared to the multiple acres we got in return. Sure, I knew there was going to be a forty B. The question was, where are all those cars going to go? What's the greatest impact of the town? What's the lesser of the two evils? That's, that's how I approach it. And this is nothing along that lines. I get it. Plus, Frank hit on something that, briefly, which is, we have a much larger area of land that's conservation, and the next thing is to, how to string them together with potentials for trails and everything. And I get it, where you're coming from, privacy. This is a great opportunity to further insulate and prevent, you know, create more privacy out of it, while giving the town a really huge benefit. And I'm just trying to figure out, I need to make sure that, you know, I hate to turn around a year or two, and somebody says, boy, you're an idiot to have voted for this, because now we, we really can't access Damon that land anymore. And if you did, you have to go through Conservation Way, but now the road to get in there is going to cost you X amount, as opposed to being able to gain access from Clap Road, which you no longer have, because you can't really go up. I'm just, that's what, that I have to deal with.
And, and to your point, John, those are the kind of questions that people fire off at town meeting.
Yeah.
And if you're not prepared to answer them, then the whole thing...
Fail, could fail.
Is a waste of time.
Right.
So having all those things lined up and, and a good plan. And, and again, in fairness to Gene, he's, he's approached us, he's tried to make this work. You know, he, he's not just saying, some of this piece of property, I'm willing to give you all of this. It seems like a bear... It seems like a very, very good deal, but we just need to be sure that we can answer those questions.
Absolutely agree. I absolutely agree.
How long do you anticipate taking to answer those questions?
I think, from my experience, I know this seems like it takes forever, but sometimes that's the way the government doesn't move forever, but my thought is, I would think, one is referral to conservation, the other would be to go to the planning, to see what the planning department has for some kind of like referral for them for information, then I would say the building inspector also, because he can, or the zoning enforcement officer, not the zoning board, because they can take a look at certain things. And then afterwards, that would give us information. And I'm only saying that because maybe that can be done in the next, I mean, you guys meet twice a month, once a month, twice a month, but you already have things lined up, and I'm just saying, process-wise, it could take a little longer. But, you know, as I said to you, I think if that answered a lot of the questions, then I'd be the first one to say, I'll stand up and help you tell it to the town.
Originally, it was a two-for-one swap. And Mr. Durosh thought that it was much better as a three-for-one swap.
I thought it was better for a four of those swaps.
And that's why I said, whoa. One of the concerns is having a parking lot next door. We now have stragglers coming on our property all the time, and the fact of having a piece...
Motorbikes.
Motorbikes, mopeds, hunters, people getting hostile and saying, I can hunt anywhere I want on town. You're not on town.
I got you.
So I think, I think John brings up good points, that's just due diligence, and Frank mentioned it also, that at town meeting, someone's going to ask those questions. So it's always good to have the support of conservation, the support of the zoning inspector, the support of planning on these projects.
And advisory too, because they're going to ask probably questions.
Well, they'll go before them also through the process. So I think, my sense is, you're ready to do something, and whether the timetable is going to work for it to get on the November 2nd meeting, I don't know if that'll happen or not. But I think the first step is to get on their agenda, and get in front of Frank and...
We have voted in principle that we think it's a good idea, and we've also elected to not, we have a parking lot kind of mapped out for there, and we have agreed that we won't pursue that until this is vetted. We've got plenty of other projects, so we're not breathing down your neck, and we won't. I mean, I think that's, we've got enough other places. As I did point out, you know, the town spent a lot of money to buy these, and folks have a reasonable expectation of using them, just like your discussion earlier with the parking at the beach. You know, people would like to get on there. And the issues of people trespassing on other properties is something that the commission has been dealing with, not only here but in other pieces, and how do we educate people, how do we keep them off of other folks' property? On the other hand, this could have been all developed into homes, and then it wouldn't have been just some occasional walker, it would have been maybe somebody's back windows looking in here. So, we're getting there.
So a couple of things that stood out for me as I talked about the property. I like the fact that it abuts the water supply, that we're going to, we can get conservation land that's right up against Aquifer and really keeps that, as opposed to 10 houses going there. That's very attractive to me. I also like the fact that you're going to have access to that, those walking trails from a different area of town.
Yep.
You know, so all of a sudden, people from Conservation Way can enjoy the woods, and it's not just the people coming off Clap Road to get to these areas to walk. You know, obviously, the three-for-one is just math, it makes a lot of sense, but those are the things that made it attractive to me to, you know, to want to pursue the project. And, you know, I had the same thoughts that John did, you know, can he develop that land? Yeah, he can. He can develop it tomorrow if he wants to, and have a thinner driveway instead of a one that goes onto that yellow land. But, you know, I think, you've got a way developing on this side, and potentially, well, more than likely, developing in the blue area will probably happen if we don't take care of, you know, if we don't, if the town doesn't want to do the swap, you know, the green portion is just potential, you know, 50, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. So, so I think...
The land will be sold.
Yeah.
We do have a purchaser.
Right. So, so the land will be sold, and, you know, you know, he came before us and said, I want, this is what, I think this is what you would prefer to do. You'd prefer to keep it in conservation, you'd prefer to swap with the town, if not, then you'll take whatever steps you want to have to take. So, I think what you need is kind of a to-do list, to say, okay, what are the next steps to get to the point that you want to get to? And then, we need to realistically say, okay, if it's not going to happen by November 2nd, then April, whatever day it is.
In your position, I would want to do due diligence too. And in my position, I look at it and say, how long does due diligence take?
Right.
It could be a two-year process.
No.
And at that point, so that, I think, all of this information already exists, and it's just a question of going to the proper people in the engineering department and taking a look at it. And probably Morse Engineering has most of the elevations already shot. As I said, they did all the Damon, and so it's, I think it's data. And if you would like to come out, I'd love to walk it with you. And perhaps we could arrange a time to walk it, take a look at it, and see for yourself. And I very much welcome that due diligence. I think, as representatives of the town, it's what you should be doing, obviously. It's just a question of how long, you know, can we make it in a timely period of time?
I got you. That's fair.
Frank, when you convinced us, convinced the town to, you know, take the Damon property, how did you say we would get there?
The access would be in the piece of property...
That's the part that I have a problem with. It seems like we're, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we convinced the town, you know, we're going to gain access to this property, you know, this way. You've been there since '78, I knew Roger Damon pretty good, maybe should have bought the property from Roger then, and then we wouldn't be having this discussion.
In what history with Roger?
I'm sure you do. I just...
We traded with Roger for half of this land right here. We gave it to Roger to complete its tree farm.
Oh, that was a mistake.
But I think that this piece of access right here, the parking lot that was proposed, fits in less than half of that width. So, for you to say you don't have access, I think is not accurate.
No, I'm not saying we don't, but I just, you know, I understand what you're saying, I agree with John, he couldn't have said it any better, but I just feel that, you know, we, you know, we convinced the town, you know, to get this property, and this would be the access, and Frank, and I understood, you know, a lot into it. But, and I understand what you're saying, I had people come through my circular driveway, it's private property, they, you know, same thing, they walk their dogs. But, I don't think we ever went to the town and said, you're going to access the property from this footage to this footage. I mean, I think we said, there's two access points. In fact, initially, you said they were going to put a parking, or some parking somewhere, and we had no idea which one of the two access points you were going to use.
Was it the yellow?
It was the yellow, which is why... And then you talked about it was an apple ball field.
Mr. Harris, it absolutely was not said that way, because I attended every single meeting, and it was against the sale of the property, we were going to have a parking lot next door. And the people on the Conservation Commission would not commit in any way, shape, or form that there would be a parking lot abutting from house. They did not put that on the table, and would not. And that was one of my biggest concerns with this. We also helped the Damons find all the papers and everything to make this go through. So we were very active supporters, and that was my one area that, and I was told with the shirt at that time, don't worry, you'll be good in everything that's going to happen, we haven't decided on anything. So if what you're saying is true, I was either lied to or something happened.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to remember. Can I just, I honestly don't recall a town meeting that we said that there would be a specific spot. I mean, given the path of least resistance, this place in yellow is the simplest spot. There's already a road that goes in, there's a cleared area, there's some knotweed that should be eradicated, and that, it also hits on some trailheads that go off into the other piece of property. Now, it doesn't have to be there. I mean, I wish I could give you all the reasons why we should or shouldn't do this, but again, I'd still like some more time. It seems very sensible to do this.
And also, you realize, that's why you're getting three times the acreage, because of the place that you want to get the property.
And it gave me even more. Gene's offered multiple deeds to property that is out there, I think he's being incredibly fair, and we certainly don't want this to become any kind of an adversarial situation, because I believe it can be worked out.
So why don't we wrap it up here, and why don't we, can you give Gene direction in terms of what he needs to do next?
Sure.
And, he's got to go through your board, he's got to go through planning, probably, and maybe zoning?
I was going to say, Neil Duggan may be the zoning enforcement officer, just to kind of...
And we can help with some of that, and certainly, I might want to get out there as well.
I wouldn't mind taking it, if that's okay, you know, take a hike through, because I mean, truth be told, I'd like to see it.
Perfect time to go for the...
So it's still on the...
I kind of, never mind.
So what we'll have to do is, we'll have to put this back on our agenda as it gets closer to the meeting, and see if we have the information that we need, where we can reasonably make an opinion on this or not. So...
So, so you need to vote the warrant at your next meeting, so that's two weeks from tonight, so you need to decide whether it's going on the warrant. And then, starting right after you vote that, October 6th, the advisory committee is going to be having people in to hear the warrant articles.
Right.
So the window, so, I mean, it would be the same article, almost verbatim, that we just did at the annual for the land swap with Livingstone, is you're actually asking town meeting to approve petitioning the legislature to take it out of '97.
You understand that.
And also conveying the land at the same time. We've been actively engaged in that process since April for the land swap that passed, and we still don't have it yet.
Okay.
Okay. I could probably tell you the best timeline is sitting over there.
Well, it's a matter of how quickly we move the legislature on the Article 97. Sometimes they go fast, sometimes they...
Can you qualify that for us? I don't understand what the legislature, what you said, missed.
If the town has taken land for conservation, open space purposes, that's known as Article 97.
The Constitution.
It is. Article 97 is an amendment to the state constitution that says, you cannot change the use of conservation land without an act of the legislature. The state governmental affairs office has a policy on handling. What I heard today, this would qualify in terms of, you have to replace it with at least equal or better open space land for not to release another policy. I mean, it seems like it will meet all of those materials, no matter how many has the vote passed for the legislation, and the legislation has passed.
Watching, that's town council, Jim Toomey there, answering those questions.
And if you think town stuff could be slow, wait till you get to legislature, it's like a glacier.
And I'd like to speak to that. We are under 621A, so our option is to come before the town to present it. You have the right of refusal, and/or we can pull it off the table, and open it to the developer or the person who wants to build this property. So, I would like to have some kind of assurance that this is not, because we have not been getting response from the town this time, including the Conservation Commission, to address this. So I'd like to have some assurance that there is due diligence.
I guess the only other point I really am on to, in terms of Mr. DeHany, what do you have to say correctly? You have questions, so that, is it my responsibility to answer all your questions, or is it your responsibility? In other words, we've spent a lot of time and money to have it surveyed, and do all of those things to make it presentable to the town, or to somebody doing the purchase in front of us. And I guess that if there are specific questions you have, that I would write them in a written format, so that they don't, they can't keep morphing. So that if there are specific questions, then are they mine, which ones are mine, and which ones are your responsibility? Because there is a town engineering department that has all the survey documents, I saw more things at the hall, in terms of elevation, and what's what means, and what isn't, and all of that.
I can answer that. There'll probably be some questions, and I'll probably ask the town myself those questions and say, the thing is though, I can't turn around and say to the town engineering department, hold the press, everybody, we've got this project here, I want answers, because there are, we've got a huge water project underway, we've got all road repairs that are going to be happening shortly, you've got seawalls that are underway with construction, so you get the idea that they're busy with other projects, but I can't just say, stop the press. But if there is something that maybe Morse Engineering can help, as I said, Frank, I know that there was a larger piece that the CPC put together, as to the bigger puzzle of all these parcels of land that are now conservation, a huge benefit for the town, that has some elevations, that could be helpful, and that can be helpful, as I said, walking it, I think, is a very important thing to be able to identify. No offense, if I walked out there and my feet start falling into water, then I realize that, you know what, it's not upland, regardless, and, you know, then there's no access. That's all I'm saying, okay?
I think it's wonderful, and if you turn it down for those reasons, that's fine.
I'm not sure we will, I'll be honest, okay?
I think a lot of your time will end on that.
All right, so the next step, you'll get together with him, and you'll talk to Neil Duggan and the planning board also.
Thank you.
Go on, for again.
Put it on for the...
Thanks, Frank.
October 6th appointment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. The next item we're going to discuss is release restriction on Torrey Lane. Mr. Hayes.
Good evening.
How are you?
Michael Hayes, our representative, formerly of Plymouth, situate now of Plymouth. I have been working with Mrs. Riddle to sell a couple of lots on Torrey's land, at the end of Torrey's Link, that abut the back end of the golf course. She had previously received zoning permission, or zoning relief, to create the two lots.
Was I on the board mic?
Yeah.
It was, all right.
Originally, yeah.
Remembered.
We're on a number ten...
A 50-foot frontage lot, right?
Pardon me?
Was it a 50-foot frontage lot? All right, I remember that.
And what has happened is, at the time, the attorney who got the special permits was aware of a restriction on a portion of those two lots, discussed it with then-town council, and then went, and they mutually agreed that in their opinions, that the passage of time of those restrictions had erased the restriction. I went into another town search, and then the commission set down to do it, and Jim and I went through this issue, and Jim and I both agreed that the restriction has not expired, that this property or area is in one of the exceptions to the statute that stinges those towns' rights, so that the towns' rights still exist. At the time that Mrs. Riddle was getting those special permits, and I think you had the forming plan, and showing the two blocks at the end of Torrey's Lane, believing at the time that the then-town council was of the opinion that the restrictions were extinguished, happily, deed into it, in negotiation, offered the town a strip of land to the affairs office. Originally, back in the 70s, when the town sold the land to Roy Whitaker to keep those two houses where Riddle lived and Roy Whitaker lived, the, our understanding that the restriction was basically put in place to protect the town well that was up there and has since been abandoned. So, in Mrs. Riddle's discussion back in 2006, when she went through zoning and about these group, it was the opinion of the town that getting some access to the back end of the golf course was a good thing. And so she has deeded that property, but the town does... And so she has deeded that property, but the town has owned that strip. It's a lot, parcel three of the plan, about a half an acre, and it currently found access from Torrey's Land at the end of Golf Course. In Jim and I discussion, we discussed whether we select to release that restriction if they are or are mine too, but we agree that it needs the town to vote. So Mrs. Riddle, at this point, is, you know, she's retired. This has always been part of her retirement to sell these two lots. And she can't sell because both... Roy Wood is a small box on Torrey's Lane that takes up her frontage on Torrey's Lane and blocks access number one, and the deed restriction prohibits any building or commercial use. She's a residential lot, but Jim and I both agree that that restriction prohibits anything being done in those two lots. So I'm here on behalf of Mrs. Riddle to ask the board to consider whether the board feels it wise to release those, that restriction, based upon the fact that they have access to the golf course that the town has wanted, and whether or not... And I've asked if you have such a mind that you consider making this a selectment article because I think you'd agree with me that this, and this in my opinion, would have no chance of passing unless it's presented by the board. And so I ask you consideration.
Mike, can we see that plan?
We don't have that, though. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I ask your question while you're looking? This is Ellen Will's old house, right? And she bought this property the way it is, right?
She bought the property the way it is.
Right.
That 50 feet of footage.
What did we do? Was it Billy Harburger that represented her back in '06?
He only got the special permits, correct.
Okay. Fill me in again. I'm a little confused. Why did she get a special permit? Refresh my memory.
One of the lots is a 50-foot frontage lot. It has 50 feet of frontage. We can apply for building...
Okay.
Permission to build when you have plenty of area.
Okay, so did she cop that off and build that?
No, no, no. These are pay-per-ends.
All right. So we...
We're on for a house.
Right. It's right across from Jackie Carroll's house. Why would we do this? The town? Speaking of, you put yourself right up here.
I think it was certainly, for sure, we think that it has what they wanted in the beginning. They have access to the golf course.
We still have access to the golf course.
Pardon me?
We still have access to the...
You would still have access to the golf.
But can I jump in again?
Yeah.
But not to the well. The well was not being used. It might be abandoned.
I believe the well up there has been abandoned for years.
Okay, so if this goes through, we wouldn't have access to that well if things change in 20 years from now.
But I think you still have access.
Where is the well, Mike, in relation to the map here? Is it on the back side of the 50-foot frontage lot, or... I can't. Is it on the back side of where the house is being proposed?
On the golf course side or the other side?
It's on the golf course side.
On the golf course side, okay.
In the back of the property or the front? By Torrey's Lane or in the back?
It's got to be down here. This is the golf course.
Further on, right. With the geese.
So it's a... The house lot is within so many feet of the abandoned well.
So they can...
And that prevents them from building, based on the statute, or the restriction on conservation...
No, it's the...
The deed restriction?
Deed restrictions that when the land was sold to... When the land was sold to the Whitakers, they retained a restriction stating that no building is structurally protected or maintained on that part of the property, and that land shall not be used for any commercial business or industrial use.
That's in the deed.
That's in the deed from the town to Roy Whitaker's wife back in '78.
And you want us to overturn it?
We want you to... We want you to release that based upon the fact that the town currently owns a much greater piece of property that Mrs. Riddle deeded to the town. But at the time, she believed that when this was presented to the zoning board, she thought that was the end. You know, she did not realize that...
So she gave us this land after that deed was done?
Yes, she gave... She sold for...
Article 97.
After the town in 2009.
And when was that deed? When was the deed?
From Mrs. Riddle.
When she signed the deed that says she couldn't build on that subject.
The restriction was in '78.
So is there a house in wall one?
No.
And there's no house in the backyard?
No.
You can't build anywhere there. So you want us to...
You can't build on it without this restriction being released.
And what is she going to build?
She'll sell a plant to some people who go out.
Just two single-family dwellings.
I think, yeah, two, a single-family dwelling.
You know, I'm just trying to, Mike, because I sat on the... I don't know, inside the chair. I can't recall. I must have been a morning. I don't recall. But maybe it did. Did it come up? The restriction come up during that discussion? Or was it one of these discussions that wasn't addressed at the time?
Not the decision.
Yeah, it's not the decision. I could see probably, and you weren't the attorney, Mike, I know that. I'm sure that probably the attorney at the time thought that the... That it was...
It was not an issue.
Not an issue. So it wasn't raised before the board. I just want to know whether it was raised before the board and that the board made a decision. I'm assuming the board would not have made a decision, knowing that if that restriction were in place because of the issue.
If I were to ask John, I would say it was an unbroken.
That's what I suspect, okay.
Because if both the attorney and, I'm told, the then-town council both is in agreement.
The decision does reference that the block three, the access to the golf course, would be given to the town.
Right.
There's no... It's not related to anything other than...
Anything other than that as an inducement for the...
It's funny, because every time I'm on hole number four, I look at the gate and I go, "What's... I thought there was going to be a house built there." And I never realized what the issue is. Recently, I thought the same.
You probably have about five balls on your line.
I've got so many balls right now. Even one is... It's funny, because we talked about access in the last thing, and I keep saying, "What I'd like to see is that in the winter, that gate open so that the people on Torrey's Lane and everywhere else can walk out of the golf course when the golf course is shut down." So they gain access to it. You know, it'd light it. But no, can you go up there? Is the gate open? Does the gate open from there? You've got to climb the fence.
The kids just walk over.
Walk around. Jim, did you just say that you thought that when we made that deal for the parcel three, that it was so that they could build the land? That was the intention of the zoning?
Well, it simply says it was going to be divided into three pieces. The third piece was going to be given to the town in order to provide access from Torrey Lane to the golf course. Didn't make any reference to the restriction. But Mrs. Riddle says she obviously was willing to part with that half acre or so as a benefit to the town, you know, basically, and gratitude for getting some of the decision that she did, even though, you know, she was entitled to that zoning decision that she had applied. She was happy to get it and wanted to be...
As far as the well goes, can the well... I mean, I'm thinking like the well that we have up off of Hollet. You know, like, it's not operational. I guess abandoned, but we've always talked about in the future. Is there any need to utilize it again? Of course, if that were the case, then we'd be going into the golf course, then I assume. I'm not sure where it is, but, you know, is it possible that the well would be activated again?
That's a good question. For irrigation purposes for the golf course, or I can ask Jim DeBarros that.
That's what I was wondering. And then the only other question I had on that is, if the restriction was in place, how many feet away? How far away is it? I'm assuming it's because of some kind of like... And is this septic or is this... No, it must be septic. It's not on. So that might be some of the concern, I guess, with leaching. I mean, I look at it from two perspectives. This is house cleaning. I realized they made this in the conveyance in good faith, reliance on, you know, what was supposed to have been conveyed in the first instance. That's why I asked the question about, were we aware of this issue prior to? Not you, Jim, but town council apparently was. And that's why they're no longer town council. But, you know, my only concern is just the well, if the well becomes active again, but if it's far enough separation to make it a move point.
One other issue I think you might want to look at, just to... I don't know what kind of records are out for the town meeting. The original deed of this property in '78 was for 1.89 acres. Town meeting appropriated, agreed on a price of $12,000. So I don't know whether that reflects a reduced price, given that the restriction was going to be on it, or whether in 1978, that was a market price for that parcel of land. All I've seen is the town meeting vote itself, whether there's any commentary that we talk about that or what its purpose was. And it's kind of strange that we could say no commercial use.
What was the year, Jim?
1978.
Probably not.
You said, the deed says six. So was it the town saying 12, Jim? Maybe that reflects exactly what you're saying, that the reduction in price.
The deed said no consideration. The drop in town deeds do.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at the... What am I looking at? Town search at the Whitaker.
It does say six, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Can we get a... Mike, do you have a copy of that document that Jim was just referring to that shows the intention of the zoning opinion?
I have the zoning opinion. That's how you make that pitch to the board.
We didn't get it scanned. Sorry, Mike.
Can I get it to you?
Oh.
I can...
Well, we're not going to... You can get it to us.
These are the all the decisions that we need to... There's the usual...
Well, I don't think we're going to vote it tonight because we're going to need to get the water thing taken care of.
All right, so we'll make sure.
So, I mean, I think I agree with John, if the intention back then was to do that. Although, why has it taken so many years for them to come back before us?
The economy, when these lots were approved, the economy tanked. There are issues with this law, these laws, as far as selling them are concerned, to get up the water, bring electricity up there. It's a project to get those... I mean, it's an expensive undertaking to get those lots in condition for a building permit for utility. So that's an issue, certainly. But mostly because the economy tanked and people just get them removed.
Okay, so why don't I suggest that we find out about the water, read those things, and we'll make an opinion next week.
Makes sense.
Free?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, thanks, Mike.
Solarine, October 6th for this one as well, in terms of an appointment.
It's amazing, it goes for 12.
Okay, now we have the zoning change petition article for microbrewery. How are you?
Good.
Just your name and address to start.
I'm sorry, yeah, Ross Elder, 217, Dr. I, in Situate. And the reason I'm here tonight is that my son and I would like to open up a small microbrewery in Situate, specifically in English area, Situate. And in order to do that, we're going to need some type of zoning related. My son is currently... He worked in Seattle. He worked for Roy for many years and soon managed a job and decided to go back to his passion, home labor for many years, and wins awards on the way. And that was really his goal in life, was to get into the brewing business and to someday open his own brewery up. His goal is to go back east, back to the station where he used to play in, hopefully open up something in Situate. Searching for a while for a location up and down adjacent towns and through Colin Kelly from the CDC, got together with Chick Fagan, who owns a property over on Countryway. And Chick and I started some discussions back in June about putting the facility on his two-inch parcel there. And as those talks developed, I was also talking to various officials at the town, Neil Duggan, Bob Ogle, trying to figure out, you know, zoning issues if we were too, okay, in English. But we actually were talking more and more with Chick. We decided she actually came to an agreement principle for a deal, a business partnership that would work. The analyst said in order to do that, the advice I got was that we would have to change the zoning laws a little bit. That... What I maybe put some luggage, some thoughts together, and we came up with what we can get in front of you right now, is what we're proposing to the town to vote on in order to change the existing zoning laws. What we would like to do is add the defined term, microbrewery, to the definitions of the current bylaws. We would like to add microbrewery to Section 420 of bylaws, which would make it a permitted use in the commercial law. And also revise Section 445, which allows for outdoor seating for restaurants and hotels in the business district. We wanted to include that with microbreweries also. Since the beginning of this process with the town, we've got tremendous response to positive feedback from basically everybody we've talked to. I know the economic development commission voted in support of the project. I understand, but no, they voted 100% in support of the project. We've gotten great support from every corner of the town, from, you know, the side of town hall and also from the citizens. We did complete citizens petition to get them to file a warrant. We required 100 signatures, we needed 175, and we figured we could cut them off then. And so, once she got to go under, she was the county's out there working up. But the response that we've gotten from people we've been talking to about the project, we've been trying to keep it a little bit under wraps for the last, you know, few months because we don't want a competitor possibly coming in and being ahead of us. We've kind of kept our whole concept under wraps. But now that it's getting out there and the feedback that we've gotten from citizens of the town, residents of the town, and again, you know, from various corners of town hall, there's just been tremendous response to the project, a lot of excitement about it. We think it would be a great addition to the community, to the business community. We're prepared to make a significant investment, obviously, in the facility. Chick is going to need a significant investment developing property, increasing the tax roll, more employment. We feel pretty strongly that having, Situate having its own microbrewery is kind of a cool thing. We think we talk about it an awful lot, it would be a great addition, people into the town, spending money in other places beyond just the microbrewery. And we think it's a good opportunity. However, do that, we want to look, it's already in, you know, as you guys already know, it's already in the business district. Quite a variety of diverse businesses are already there, including a restaurant, a store, a bakery, which is already making stuff to sell. Our concept would be to, you know, businesses. A microbrewery by definition, and Tony, after talking to the hall, I can probably first mean, I'm just giving a really diverse view, but a microbrewery is a small, locally owned and operated type of facility. You have the limitations on what beer you can produce, you can produce a maximum of 15,000 barrels a year. I can tell you our projections, we'll alter anything into that over the first three or four years of operation. It'd be great, we should have one at some point in time, but that's not on the cards right now. We're not going to be a restaurant, we're not going to serve food, strictly a production facility, 5,000 square foot building, about 4,000 in the middle of the brewery and beer, from Indian beer, stories of beer, kegs. And in front of the building, we're envisioning a thousand square foot taproom. Maybe Benno Microbrewery, Cisco Brewery, or Mayflower Brewery down in Plymouth, or, you know, if there's any number of them around, you know, the concept of the taproom, where people can congregate, sample beers that have been made, and also take beer out for retail basis, sell it to growers, they call it, take it down, drink the beer. And the people taking it are popular in the city of West, in Vermont, some of the microbreweries will be in front range. And also we'll sell on wholesale basis to restaurants and pack stores and so on and so forth. There's actually three licenses that are required. There's a federal license, that's issued by the federal government, which is the Alcohol Backflow Act, Euro. And that's a very lengthy process, which is one of the reasons why we're trying to get this kind of a fall in town meeting. You are not even allowed to apply for that license until you have your location secured and law enforcement law. And the program I can play is a substantial investment. So you can't even apply for that license, I mean, you can't even apply for licenses until you have both of those elements in place. At that point, it's a six to eight month project, a process before you process the license. Once you have your federal license, then you apply for the state ADCC license. And it's actually not a liquid license, it's a farmer's, farmer brewer, a farmer brewer permit, which they will issue to you with your agreement that they'll use locally grown products, to as much of the degree as you can. Local grains, anything that you can buy locally from local farmers, who grow into making the beer. My son has already got a vendor lined up in Massachusetts to try grain from. He also intends to use local ingredients for seasonal beers, like pumpkins, strawberries, raspberries, for the flavored beer. But after you apply, after you get your federal license, you apply for the state license, the ADCC, the farmer's brewer permit, you have to get a farmer brewer's pouring permit, and the town has to approve that also. So it's a very lengthy and extensive permitting process.
It's interesting. I mean, I've always thought about, you know, how they do this. And I just wonder, I mean, does it fall, again, does it fall under, is it a separate licensing technique? Do you know, John?
For, for the town, or for the?
No, as far as, in the town, you know, we base things on population and stuff like that. Does it?
It's like a farmer's.
Oh, it is?
Like, under the agricultural.
Yeah, my understanding is the farmer brewer, the farmer brewer's permit, it doesn't affect the, with the licenses that are available in town, it's, it's totally separate.
Sounds like a great, I mean, sounds great. Great concept.
Yeah, the feedback and response we've gotten from the town has been.
Yes, great concept.
Jim, did you have?
Two forms of a microbrewery license. One is a farmer's brewer, which allows you to pour on premises, without a license from the, the town approves it, but there's not a separate license issue. If you're a microbrewery but not a farmer brewer, then you have to get a Section 12, you know, regular license itself for beer, which then would entail an issue with the number of licenses the town has. Farmer brewery, you get the whole package, you can sell the beer there, on, you know, retail, I think it's up to two gallons of seal or something like that, and then you can pour it and pour.
No, I, I just thought, the fact that you're being loco, I think it'd be great to sell the she, you know, oil stout. Rashawn Harris Enterprise Oil Stout.
My son does have an idea, he's already got a recipe, but the other for a beer is gonna be called Army Two. And it's gonna have British ingredients, American ingredients, and, and this whole thing really, it wants the town, I think, to get the army mix up. The old Army Two, they brought up, the big sisters. I mean, it's, we've got a lot of good ideas about tying to the community, who wants to, to, to vote a percentage of revenues back into, you know, working clauses in the town. We've already been approached, on a formal basis, by football, we'd like to do some sort of special label, restaurants featuring the beers. I think it's an opportunity to really, you know, work for businesses together, working together, and I, I really think it'd be a pretty cool place. It's been a long way to go yet, but getting the zoning, you know, tweaked a little bit, is certainly.
So I talked to Ross, and Ross had talked to Neil and then Bob Vogel about proposing the language. And the language they're proposing is to change just certain aspects of the zoning bylaws. Right now, currently, a microbrewery cannot exist in the town of Situate. So by coming in with basically a definition, I think it's a definition, what do you have here?
The first one.
Using the definition, and then also the, the use, and the use is only by special permit. It's allowed in the general business, which covers Green Bush and North Situate, and also Hummerock, and then the HP District, which is the harbor business, and then the C, which is your commercial. So all this is only permitted by special permit, so nobody's allowed, as a matter of right, to be able to open up one of these. And then there's the additional language, which is being able to, I guess, I didn't realize this one, but seating accessory. And you're adding the word "microbrewery" to outdoor seating or dining accessory, like to a restaurant?
Yeah, that section allows for outdoor seating, yeah, if you're seated, you can serve outdoors at your hotel or a restaurant. We wanted to add "microbrewery" because part of the plan is, is permission is to have a small.
Garden area, yeah.
You know, pick the tables.
Makes sense. So those are the, those are the, primarily the three changes that you're looking at?
Yes.
I think it's a great idea. I told you that, so I'm just saying.
Tom, honey?
I'm excited. I think it's, you know, you've got a lot of work to do, and I don't particularly want to stand in your way. If, my just question, I didn't know Chick had some land there.
Yeah, where is it? Where's the land gonna be?
It's, well, he's got that two-way parcel, where, where his house is, he's got his woodworking shop, and then he's got that other parcel next door, with a house on it. Chick is currently renovating a house in First Parish, that he and Nancy are gonna move into, and he's got plans to, this, I'm gonna get this all.
I don't know where he lives, so.
Across the street from my office.
So, straight across the street?
Straight across the street is a, kind of a arts and crafts building with a hip roof, with a garage. Michael Coyne was there with some of his art studio. And then next door's Chick Fagan's house, which is a white colonial.
Closer to Morning Glory?
Morning Glory. And it's with a barn, there's a boat out there. Chick owns all that land, and his wife owns the land back to the storage facility.
He also owns the storage facility. He developed four storage facilities back there, back in the park.
So it'd go in one of his house owners' barn?
Well, he's gonna, the plan would be, the house on the left, he's got the house, he bought that extra parcel on the left, to get some additional land. That house could be, be taken that, all, yeah, so that.
That was a former DPW director.
Was that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's wonderful, that's great.
So, I guess my concern is, so here's the.
There's the house with the garage, and then there's his house right here, Chick's house with the big barn in the back.
Right on, by the bridges?
Yeah, the bridges.
And it'll be, it's not going where his house is, it's going?
Next door.
Right there?
Yeah, I gotta Google or shut it, but I don't.
Directly, it's across from my office.
So, so you're gonna brew, what, how big of equipment are you, are you gonna go 15,000 barrels? What kind of system are you?
No, that's, that's the definition of a microbrewery. He's gonna have a 15-barrel system, and his projections right now, we're looking at 2017, if we're just fully in operation. I mean, everything works out okay. We're gonna go to the town hall, for the town meeting on the second, apply for the federal license, the state license, get those, we would probably break around, again, Chick's gotta go through, obviously, this whole thing.
He's gonna go through his own.
Yeah, he's gotta go, he's aware of all that. But if everything came together.
So you're gonna have a taproom up front where you're gonna serve, sell? So you, you can come in, and it's like a little bar where?
Yeah, you can pull a pint, and it's, it's, it's a community gathering spot, we found with all the different microbreweries. You can go to Seattle, there'll be eight microbreweries.
Well, it's essentially a bar, right? It's a place where I can go buy a pint from.
Yes. And you can take something, you know, growers, to take.
Right. So it's retail, you'll sell, and you'll sell kegs to retail establishments?
Yeah, primarily it'll be wholesale.
Right. So the only thing, and I, I think that area is, is good for it, but when you brew beer, it smells. So, you know, I'd be concerned if it was in a big residential area. It's not, though. You know, that's actually a pretty good area for it, but it is, it is a smelly process.
And there'll be a pretty sophisticated denting system, and obviously with a special permit condition, and Neil and I talked about it, we'll do everything we need to do to mitigate anything like that. But there's not really a, a 15-barrel system, and there's not gonna be a discernible quality condition there. Although you, you're a little brewer yourself.
Yeah, so it's, but it is, you know, if you were gonna put it in by condos, then I'd say you'd get, you're gonna get complaints. But I think in that area, it's kind of open, and, you know, you get John over there for lunch every day. Good. Well, I think it's great to promote the town, you know, is it gonna be, is Situate gonna be incorporated in the name at all, or is it?
He's, yes, there'll be, Situate will be there somewhere, yeah, or something that will be easily identifiable with Situate, and certainly the beers, you know, the Army Two. He's got some other ideas also, Ayrsters Brew.
Well, it's a great idea, and it's another thing to draw people to the town. And, so, John, you were just going over the actual changes to the bylaw, are we?
You're adding a definition of what a microbrewery is, and then it goes.
Is that the definition from the state?
Now, that definition was put together, some information that Laura had gotten from a couple of other towns, and John was helpful in providing some information. And then, that's actually, this is very close to the definition provided by the American Brewing Association, which is the big 3,400 member microbrewers association, so this is conjunction with that.
Has anyone looked at this to see, assume it's within the standards?
Vote to turn this over to the planning board.
Yeah.
Because they'll have to have a public hearing.
Right.
So they'll wordsmith it.
Okay. And then the, to, 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 to commercial use, just in those areas that you were talking about before, Green Bush, and then the outdoor seating. So how is that different than a restaurant's outdoor seating? What is that? What's your take on that? So right now, our bylaw says restaurants can have outdoor seating, but microbreweries aren't in that definition, is that?
Well, yeah, there is no definition.
Right. Is that essentially what that is?
For example, it looks like, the, the, the word "microbrewery" is being added. So for example, you have restaurants, and you have outdoor seating, and so this is an accessory to the main use, which is the, the restaurant within the building. And with hotel, I, I guess that's the same. I don't know, the seating outside the hotel, oh yeah, you can take a look at the, in Situate, they have seating at the top. And so what they're doing here is they're, they're allowing the opportunity to have outdoor seating so that people could sit down.
Now, would that come before us, for alcoholic?
No, that's what they were saying. In other words, because I think if it's under, as Jim had mentioned, the farmer's license, that's like an agricultural exemption.
If we put this in there, they could just put outdoor.
It preempts, it preempts local regulation, because it's an agricultural from the state, I think.
So how do we control the outside aspect of it?
Well, the pouring permit part, that is, the, hopefully somehow, that is required to sign off on that, that's my understanding. Because there'll be three different components to that. There'll be the farmer brewer's license, the brewing beer, the farmer brewer's pouring license issued by the state, the guy has to be done in conjunction with the town. That's my understanding.
So it would have a little say on?
I don't think so, not much. Jim, what do you, you think we have any say in terms of what?
Well, it depends on, the way I understood was, if it's farmer brewers, they can pour without a separate pouring license from the town.
Like, from the town.
If it's, and I'm not sure if that's subject to approval by the town, if it's, if it's not a farmer microbrewery, then they need a full regular assessment.
My understanding is.
So I think you could handle that in a special permit, you know, in terms of size, area where they.
Well, that's not us.
You know, that would be a condition.
It's a planning issue.
Yeah. That's the whole idea of a special permit, probably.
Any questions, other questions from the board? From the audience?
I just have one, Steve Bjorkland. Sounds like a great idea. I don't drink beer, never had a sip in my life, but it sounds like a good idea. The only question I have is, as you're changing the bylaw, the Green Bush area is in the Water Resource Protection District, and there's certain allowed uses and uses that aren't allowed in the Water Resource Protection District. Has anyone looked to see if you have to include this as a use in that portion of the bylaw? Because just because it's allowed in the general business district, it won't allow it in the Water Resource District if it's not allowed there. So you may need to change that section of the bylaw as well.
Yeah, Chick wanted to address that. He's been, you know, overseeing the actual building part of it, and I think he's already open to that, he's very much aware of that from developing the storage areas back there. So I haven't referred you to my question.
I think he's just giving you a heads up.
Yeah, my only comment, so I can still support it if they had to change that section of the bylaw as well.
I'll have to look at it, Steve, to find out. I mean, the question that comes and applies, it's a business district, and begs the question, are we trying to promote business, unique business that could be beneficial, and probably would make sense to do it. Obviously, does it impact water resources? It's, it's not, it's across the street from, really, the tributary.
There's a lot of drainage issues and.
How much?
Mash, and, you know, I assume you're gonna set up.
You got the railroad right behind that, too. I mean, I'm, I'm like.
It just gives them the storage of materials and things like that, and I'm not sure exactly what you use to, to make the stuff. But that section of the bylaw talks a lot about the storage of, of stuff, greater than household use, which obviously this is gonna kick in.
Materials aren't bad, it's really the, the weight, I mean, it's almost like a huge kitchen that you're making the stuff, and there's drainage all over the place, and then obviously after you brew, there's a lot of aftermath that you gotta shovel. But I'm sure it'll be all specked in the head.
Yeah, that will be.
Ms. Berman?
That drainage issue, what needs to be altered, that will all come with a special permit, stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. But I would also like to say that this is exactly the type of thing that you all charged the EDC with in the beginning, to bring in new business, new revenue, new people. This is exactly what you wanted, and here it is.
I think that's what we're saying.
I know, it's exactly what John said, and I just want to reiterate it, that it's really important.
That was a positive comment.
Of course, he always says, "Hear the comments, we're talking about."
But any other questions? So do we want to make a motion? What are we doing, Trish? Are we?
Voting to turn it over to the planning board, because the planning board has to have a.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Move to.
Hearing on it, per review in thirty days.
I'm just trying to figure out what the language on the.
Move to, move the article to the.
Move to prove the.
To vote to turn it over.
Turn it over, the, the issue concerning the microbrewery over to the planning board. How's that? So well.
Advising section.
Very succinct.
Second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Great idea. Okay.
So I know Nancy's next on your agenda, but I think Mr. Bjorkland's here for a request.
That's right, what is it?
It's gonna take a while. She's gonna take.
Code of fifty-five.
So let's do Evangeline Drive first.
Okay.
So, in, I think in your packet, you have a request, a letter dated September 10th from Mark Winchester regarding the acceptance of Evangeline Drive, Tilden Estates, to be reserved on the warrant for town meeting. So there's a couple of issues with this, in that street acceptances go to the street acceptance committee. And the street acceptance committee, contrary to this letter, is always in existence. It's the chairman of the board, a selectman, a member of the advisory committee, a member of the planning board, and then DPW person. So this request has to be reviewed by Evangeline Drive, I mean, by the street acceptance committee, to see if it is meeting the town standards, it has to be brought up to the town standards. In this particular case, the road is fairly new, very new, so I don't anticipate that there's going to be any issues in terms of repairs that need to be made to the public way that the butters would get a better man on. So that's, that's fine, except that it still has to go to the street acceptance committee. And then under the statute, in order to accept a public way, the board has to lay, have a, hold a public hearing, and lay out the road, and then it has to be on the file with the town clerk no less than seven days. I do not know if all those criteria can be met. There are also some other issues in terms of, which I discussed, the road width, and the planning board waivers when the road was originally constructed, that the DPW has concerns with. But in terms of the actual process that we have, it has to go to the street acceptance committee, and then the board has to notify the butters and lay it out as a public way. So I just wanted to put that out there. Again, I think the road as is, does not need any work whatsoever, other than the fact that it's been built and it's less than the current town standards. But that is something, as I noted to you, I have sought to resolve with the planning board in terms of giving waivers to what the DPW requires to accept a road as a public way. So that sort of lays it out for you, Steve.
Now, Steve, come on up to the lavender, because.
So, I told Kevin that, you know, the street acceptance committee should meet as soon as possible, of which Mr. Vagnani is a member. I just need to. I just need to do the calendar stuff to see if you can get it, notify the butters, and lay it out according to the statute, when technically, you really don't do it until the Street Acceptance Committee turns it over to you. So, that's sort of where we are, in terms of this town meeting.
Is there a time constraint on this?
I can tell you that we put the Street Acceptance Plan together last November 17th, and gave it to the town, and we've been waiting approximately a year to have this accepted by the town. Yeah, we like to get it done. I mean, every time we do a subdivision, we like to wrap everything up completely, and the last step is to get the road accepted by the town. I think every time we've done this in the past 30 years that I've been doing it, the town has accepted the roads with the waivers that the planning board had granted. We were actually requested to ask for some of these waivers, because they wanted less pavement, so we basically did what the town asked us to do. And if that process changes in the future, which it looks like it may be now, we're glad to put in more pavement, make the roads wider, but we're kind of caught in the middle on this one particular road, where we were asked by the planning board to make the pavement, I think it's 22 feet instead of 24, so we did to improve drainage, because it's right near the Water Resource Protection District, and it just made for a better project to have it a little bit less, and we've kind of had a changing of the guards here as far as DPW is concerned. And I understand where Kevin's coming from, and in the future, we won't ask for that waiver, and we'll tell the planning board, no, we're going to make it 24 feet, if that's what, if that's what the town wants.
I think what Trish's point is, there's just not enough time to get it done before this meeting.
Well, I think, yeah, I think there is. They have a Street Acceptance Committee meeting scheduled, I think that just got moved up, and plans are all done.
I'm the chair.
Everybody reviewed. Well, the planning board has already reviewed it, the Azbult plans are in, we went out to their consultant, their consultant said there's no problems at all with the road, and there's a letter on record of that. And DPW also reviewed it, I don't know why, but they also reviewed it as well, and DPW has said that there is no problem as far as the construction of the road is concerned. The only issue is the roadway to pavement width, not the roadway width, but the travel pavement width of the road. And I went and chatted with Kevin about that, and he said we'll address that in the Street Acceptance Committee meeting, but I think it's more to show that in the future, they don't want to have roads be that narrow. So, all we're really doing is looking to hope that we can reserve the spot and get that done prior to the town meeting, I think. Just, I think we can do it.
So, do you have a plan that you can give us?
It's been in since November 17th.
Do you have a, like, can I finish, please? Do you have a plan that you can give to my office? Because it has to, we have to notify the butters and have a hearing on it at our next meeting, or the meeting after. That's part of the statutory acceptance of the road before town meeting. And the town's street acceptance policy has been in place for six, five years, and the waiver of the width for a road is only allowed under the flexible development bylaw, it's not allowed in any others. And so, going forward, the planning board will not grant any waivers on road width, even for flexible development. If there was an emergency down there, although the fire department did review it as they do all above it, there's no two-way traffic that can do on that. And as I noted, we have to do a special pickup truck to plow, because it's narrow. But this street was done, as Mr. Bjorkland notes, in accordance with everything that the town required of him. We internally are working with a lot of issues like that right now, in terms of the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing. So, as he said, the street is in perfect condition for acceptance, it's just I have to do the math on notifying the butters. So, if we can't do it the 6th, then we've got to do it the 20th, and then it has to be on file no less than seven in the town clerk. So, I think we can do it, but since I don't have in my possession everything that's apparently someplace else, we have to get it from those other departments.
Yeah, I'll be glad to get a copy of the plan from you.
It just shows the road, so that...
Make sure we're in parage of her office tomorrow morning.
So, when the warrant comes out, the town clerk actually has something that if a resident had a question, they could see it.
By 10 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Awesome. So, we will keep it on here, and if you can, Lorraine, if you can put it on the agenda for the 6th, tentatively?
Probably more, I don't...
Trish, don't.
It may, it may be the 20th, but we'll get with Kevin, as long as it happens before November 2nd.
Can we get clarification when you have a chance? Because this, Steve had mentioned this to me, I think, three weeks ago, I forgot when you were talking about the other issue on Vogel and Buckett. But then I got a call from one of the actual owners up on the Evangeline, and it threw me off, because I was like, the process is the process that you spelled out, realizing that this was going forward, and I'm like, we should have, they should have been in front of us, or me as chairman last year, so that we could have dealt with it. And then, I didn't even know, you know, the street acceptance hasn't even seen... The reason I'm asking is this, the question I have is, you know, developer comes in, goes to planning board, planning board says, these are the conditions for building a roadway, subdividing it, so on and so forth, grants waivers. Is there an expectation that the planning board understands, and primarily through the planner, that, you know, these roads, in all probability, are going to be accepted as public ways in the future? And if that's the case, then what's the basis for the waivers if they're not going to adhere to the...
That's exactly what we discussed last week, is that, that the planning board will in the future write in their conditions that if the road width is less than what the DPW requires, it will not be accepted as a public way.
Because the road that I'm thinking of is like Cornerstone, I think it is, that was built out, wasn't Steve, it was somebody else, right? Oh, was you? And there are different things that were deficient, Steve, I might add, but the long and short of it is, is that it got accepted, we had to have the people pay for it and approve it, and I'm like, sitting here going, you know, and I always say this, because, you know, I presume some of the people who are on the planning board, they're new to the position, not you, Ann, but, you know, people who haven't gone through the process, and the planner needs to really articulate, these things cannot be changed, this is why you can't do it. Or, there's got to be some kind of restriction, saying this road will never be accepted as a public way. Consequently, you're getting a benefit to build what you're building, and then we never accept it, and, you know, I just, because I think there's a disconnect, I feel sometimes with these roads, and I feel like now everybody's going to come to us, all these people who, how many lots are there that you sold? How many houses?
15.
Yeah.
So, 15 plus, 30 people are going to be up in arms, because we're not accepting the street, and yet, like, try to explain to them, maybe the street's not up to the acceptance of what the street, the town would ordinarily approve, or should approve, so...
But this isn't Steve's fault.
No, it's not Steve.
No, no, no.
I'm saying, I just know, I think there's a disconnect.
So, because it's late, we're going to wrap this up. So, you get, final word, go.
We can just have a couple of quick seconds. First of all, Cornerstone Estates was a road that we built, it did have a condition in the approval that we accepted, that said this would never be put out for public acceptance. You didn't see me come in and sit in front of you to ask to have that done, that was something the residents did, so the road was not inferior, it was just not built to be a public road. Evangeline Drive was built to be a public road from day one. So, they granted certain waivers that didn't make the road deficient, in other words, it's not called construction, it's just they asked for a little bit narrower road. Almost every road I've ever done in town for 30 years has been narrow pavement. This is the first time.
And that's just not good for the size of our plows now, and the way the burms have developed, because the town's destroying the burms, and then the residents want, so, but...
Great, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Next item is the Water Department debt reconciliation. Nancy Hall, the financial director and town accountant.
Thank you.
We were right on time.
It's always come after the discussion of microbreweries, which are items over there. I'll try to be extremely brief on this, these are items that are going to show up on the special town meeting or before you. As you are well aware, the board awarded a bond in June 2015 for $86 million, it's a 25-year bond, it funded the majority of those free debt exclusions for the library, the middle school, and public safety complex. They've also financed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Water, 23 million water project, and as we discussed at that time, the town received a very large cash premium, and we are, because on the special town meeting or a special town meeting, we'll deal with the premium that's allocated to the debt exclusions, which is the time of the interest of the bond paid down principle. We were able to do that with the Water Enterprise portion, and what we need to talk about tonight is the debt, as well as some other items with the Water Enterprise debt. We originally had not planned when we did the fiscal '16 budget for Water Enterprise to finance both Phase 1 and Phase 2. We had applied to the Clean Water Trusts to get a low interest loan, but we were rejected, so we were left with having to finance Phase 2. We had bonds, in the air, 25-year bonds, and we incorporated it. So, the debt service budget for the Water Enterprise as voted at annual town meeting is insufficient, and it will need to be audited by approximately $271,000, and we knew that when we set the water rates, and that was all included in that. We also have to discuss the, we established at the annual special town meeting in April, a Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization Fund, as well as Sewer Enterprise Capital Stabilization Fund. We did allocate funds to Sewer Capital Stabilization Fund, especially, we did not allocate anything to the Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization Fund, and we want to capture some of the revenue from the fiscal '14 water rates that was raised, and close down to retained earnings, and put that into that account, and we made a recommendation to you on that. And we also wanted to decide what we wanted to do with this premium. The premium that we received on the 25-year bond was $1.15 million, so it's a significant premium. And the options that you have for that would be to either pay down for remainder of that project, so that you would issue less debt, so there's still $8 million that's authorized for Phase 3 of the project. You could pay down that $8 million, rescind the borrowing authorization by the $1.15 you could receive in cash, and do it that way. Or, you could instead put that money into the Water Capital Stabilization Account for future use towards the debt service costs of what's already been financed. Personally, I would recommend that you do the thing that you do with the debt exclusions, which is to rescind the borrowing authorization and use that premium as cash. That would account for approximately a $500,000 annual savings on that final piece of the project, because you wouldn't have to issue debt for $1.15 million, assuming it's a 20-year bond. So, now that we just fast-forwarded the Water Enterprise debt.
Yeah, let's do one at a time now.
The only thing that, in this portion of the meeting that you need to decide is what you want to do with that premium. That's the only vote that you would have to take, because that would decide whether or not it becomes an article on the special town meeting. Right now, it's there, but if you decide that you don't want to pay down, reduce the borrowing authorization from remaining $8 million, to recommend that town meeting, then that article will go away, and we still have the Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization Account, that you could allocate part of that or all of that into. I'm sorry to be fast, I just assumed they were...
So, the $1 million, what you're saying is, we can pay down the Phase 3 of the project?
Correct.
Which is very similar to what we did on the other ones, it's just instead of paying Phase 1 or Phase 2 down, we're going to put it in Phase 3.
Phase 3 is what's left.
Right. My concern is, should we apply some of it to this 270, 180, the additional interest expense that we got because we borrowed the money sooner?
It's all coming from the same area, so everything has closed out to retained earnings now, so the 270, 180 is going to come from retained earnings, any allocation into Water Enterprise Capital Stabilization would come from retained earnings, and this $1.15 is sitting in retained earnings.
So, how much is in retained earnings, not including the $1.15?
$2.5 million.
Wait, $2.5 million in water retained earnings? Can we raise the rates?
Keep in mind, $1.15, that is the premium.
I just said, take that out.
Oh, absolutely.
$1.4.
About $1.4.
Which is a little over where we want to keep our threshold reserve for retained earnings for water.
And you purposely raised rates to capture this money towards the debt service cost.
Right, and I just got my water bill the other day.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was... Okay. So, any thoughts? I, I think it makes sense to just take it and apply it to Phase 3, and just have the $8 million debt be 6.8.
Yes, 6.5. And that would be consistent with what has happened with the free debt exclusions as well.
Right.
I agree. I think that makes sense.
Right.
I concur.
Motion? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would like you to vote it.
The one that's written, move the board of selectmen's supporting article at the November 2nd, 2015, special town meeting, to reduce the remaining $8 million on November 2013 special town meeting, Article 11, water pipe replacement borrowing authorization by $1.15 million.
Second? Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
I'll be your fast forward.
Thank you for the detailed presentation.
Do we lose an article now?
Okay, now we're moving on to new business. Did we, oh, Trish, are we going through, we're not going through those, are we?
Trish, do we, do we need to go through these articles?
We're not going through all the other ones.
Yes.
We are?
Just quickly, I'm not at your next meeting, and you have to vote the warrant, so I just, we have one minute.
You're not at the meeting, and we're going to vote the warrant?
October 6th, yes, that's why you have all this stuff two weeks early. So, I, there's nothing that should jump out with you that's highly unusual, but I do want to talk a little bit about Article 2, because as Nancy noted earlier in the meeting about our financial software package, we need an additional appropriation to bridge the gap, to make the bid award for this, and it's going to be about $75,000. And it would be paid from free cash, since it's both for town and school, integrated financial software. And Nancy will be at your next meeting to do the bid award for you, and go into detail of how that flushes out. She already told you earlier this evening, we've gone out to bid twice, there's only three really companies that do municipal finance, and when we finally, we rated all the bids, and then opened the prices yesterday, and it's about $75,000 more, we think, than we have appropriated, depending on which components we buy and at which year we implement them.
How much did we already appropriate?
$400,000.
So, it's going to be $475,000 for software, municipal software.
That is correct. And this is something that we, when we got the $400,000 approved in FY '14, the town is late to the party in integrating its financial management systems. We run two separate ones now, they're not integrated, which means the general ledger doesn't talk to payroll and PAM stuff, or assessing, or whatever. Most towns have one system that does that. We have three different ones. So, and the price of offloading all those for one omnibus integrated software system, and the conversion of the data, and the training on the new system, the turnkey stuff one time, is all in the front year cost, and then it comes off in later years.
And that was passed as a capital item?
Yes, in FY '14. Yeah, right, I think.
Yeah.
Or in '16, FY '14.
And we're short, because one company keeps buying the other, and it's just...
That's exactly what's happened.
Just two layers.
Yeah, and so, today, we completed, I contacted 15 other communities about the two companies, even though one's more expensive, and it was pretty universal in terms of who's the clear choice. So, as I said, we just found out all this out today, but, so, under Article 2, in addition to those four items that you see, will be $75,000. The rest, I think, in the interest of time, Article 3 is storm mitigation.
So, Article 2, so we just went over the water debt?
Yes.
$350,000 there, and the sewer, is that, oh, I read that, that was electricity, right?
More electricity and more repairs.
All right, the AT4 air raider, Sean. You remember that?
That's what it is.
That's right.
Okay, that's right. Article 3, moving the storm mitigation.
Which is our standard policy to replenish stabilization. Article 4...
Is that coming from free cash?
Yes.
Yes, right off the top.
Debt reconciliation.
This is related to the bond issuance again, but this is for general fund debt, not water fund debt.
So we're actually reducing the appropriations?
Because now we know the actual amount because we guesstimated interest rates and all that. And now we know actuals so we can reconcile all those with what we do in terms of the long-ted debt interest. Article 5, Nancy, do you want to try and...
Sure. We have funds left over for the Wampechuk School Project, about $85,000. So it makes sense, since that's also a debt exclusion, to use those funds to pay down the middle school project, not in addition to what was already approved, but to reduce the $75 million by that $85,000. Doesn't sound like much, but it's just sitting there and it should be used.
And Article 6, along the same lines, is for the middle school reconciliation of the bond premium.
What we just talked about, we're just ratifying what has already occurred with the bond when it was issued in June. We did an immediate pay down by the amount of the premium.
Because we made all these assumptions for town meeting to approve in April, now that we got the premium and the lower interest rate, we're reducing the overall debt. Remember, we still have some debt to float for this, so we'll be able to capture this. And then Water Capital Stabilization Fund, this was the fund that you approved at the last town meeting. So when people pay their, we can take a portion of the increased water rates for the water projects and apportion it over the life of the debt associated with the water expansion project instead of, you know, just using it all now and then having to raise rates 10 years from now because we spent the money we got from the increased rates in the first three years. It makes really good prudent financial policy. And again, Article 8, that's what Nancy just talked to you about, that you voted. Article 9, we have not heard yet whether or not we're going to get a grant, another grant for the dam and seawall repair fund. We should hear by town meeting, so this is a placeholder. It is a $1.5 million grant with a $1.5 million cash match. This article would accept the loan.
It's a loan.
Yeah. It's not a grant, it's a loan in the form of, you know...
What's that? It's a loan or a grant?
It's a loan.
It's a loan, a low-interest loan.
So what's the cash match?
1.5.
What?
50%.
It's 50%, right?
So we have, where's that 100, where's that coming from?
We already have appropriations to cover.
For seawall?
That would be the $2 million petition article that was passed in the wee hours of the town meeting, so we already have the authorization. And this would be for the seawall on Oceanside Drive.
But it's authorized, but where's it coming from?
Borrowing.
It's a borrowing.
It's a borrowing.
That's what the...
So we're going to borrow, borrow the $1.5 million to match the $1.5 million loan?
That's correct. Article 10 is a request from the CPC committee to rescind the authorization for the girls' softball field, which the Rec. Department is amenable to. Article 3 is housekeeping. We rescind authorized unissued debt as once the project's completed, just $60,000 here. It's housekeeping. Articles 12 and 13 are errors in the general bylaws that we've talked about for a few years and we're correcting them. One is simply changing historical society to historical commission in the bylaws and the other is the terms for CPC do not reconcile in two places in the bylaws. And this would correct it. You just need to decide whether you want them to be one-year terms or three-year terms.
Tricia, can you just clarify one quick thing for me? So on Article 9, it says 50% cash match.
Right.
So wouldn't it be 700, I mean...
In other words, by saying 50%, really it's a...
100% match would be 1.5, 1.5?
Right.
So we're going to get a $3 million...
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
$3 million all in.
It says 1.5, I thought it was a...
Actually, we asked for four, but it's more, it's likely we'll get less than...
At that point, four.
So we're going to borrow money to borrow, we're going to borrow money to take another loan? Explain that to me?
Yeah. So in order to finance a $3 million seawall project, half of it will be coming through a state low-interest loan, probably at 2%. The other half, we have to come up with the money. We don't have $1.5 million in free cash to put towards this project, but we do already have a previously approved town meeting article for $2 million borrowing.
Yeah.
And we're doing that with the loan we got from the last dam in seawall, which was $2 million.
So just to wrap it up, so to clarify that, so we have some money set aside for seawalls already. Are we using any part of that or is it all going to be...
Pretty much everything we have set aside, other than that one authorization, is tapped out for Edward Foster and the other Oceanside project.
Right.
We're cobbling together all these little pieces that we've previously approved to do these bigger projects, which is great, it's just...
And they're all itemized in that earlier thing I went over under my report, under the coastal impact study. And then Article 14, you just discussed Evangeline Way acceptance. Article 15, you've brought over to the next meeting for Torres Lane. Article 16 is the hold with no information on the land swap, depending on your determination. And Article 17, you just heard from Mr. Elder.
Great. Good job.
So Nancy and Mr. Bangert will be here on the 6th. You have to vote the warrant. If you don't, for some reason, you'll have to have a special meeting because the warrant has to be posted October 20th, which is why you have about 95% of everything you need tonight.
So if we have a problem with something on the 6th, we'll have to have another meeting before the 20th?
Yes.
Is that our next meeting, the 6th?
Yes.
Aren't we meeting the 20th anyways?
You're meeting the...
Has to be posted.
The warrant needs to be posted the day of the 20th.
Day of the 20th.
And you're not meeting till the evening of the 20th.
So if we have a hiccup with the next one, we have to go to the 13th?
Or we could meet...
The Monday?
Monday if you have to.
There won't be any hiccups, right?
What?
No, I don't, I think you'll be okay.
Won't be any hiccups?
No hiccups.
Right, no hiccups?
Only if we drink the beer.
New business?
Is that it, Tricia, with the...
I'm sorry.
Is that it with the warrant?
Yes, sir.
Great, so new business. So this is a vote and discussion on one-day beer and wine licenses.
Move to grant tailor-made bartenders a one-day beer and wine license for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on September 30th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Move to grant tailor-made bartenders a one-day beer and wine license for an event at St. Mary's for the Friends of Situate seniors on October 16th, 2015, from 6:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move to grant hospital hostess a one-day beer and wine license for an event at the Gar Hall on October 17th, 2015, from 7:00 p.m. till 10:30 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I'll move to grant St. Mary's a one-day beer and wine license for a ladies' night to be held at the Parish Center on November 5th, 2015, from 6:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 4-0. Next item is a vote and discussion on the election machines. So town clerk Kathy Curran sent us a note and some pictures, so she wants to discontinue the old OPEC Eagle II election machines and start using the DS200 precinct tabulators.
And you have an updated motion that I passed out to you for this?
Vote to discontinue the use of the Opti Eagle II.
No, it's going to be the, oh.
Yeah. Vote to, vote to discontinue the use of the Opti Eagle II election machines and vote to begin use of the new DS200 precinct tabulators at the next election, which they are eligible as required by the Secretary of the Commonwealth.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Next item, annual appointments. We have the Veterans Council and the election workers.
We have one person from the planning work for the beach, Situate Beach Commission.
And one person for the beach study commission from planning. So why don't we do the easy one? Do we have to read all these names?
Four.
The election committee?
No, you can just say the attached sheet.
As a present.
Motion somebody for the election workers in the attached sheet.
So moved.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, now we need the Veterans Council, two two-year terms and three three-year terms. So the people that we spoke to...
Are we doing, which one are we doing first?
Whatever one you make a motion for. Where's that...
That's what I'm looking for.
Where's that sheet?
I'll move to appoint Dennis Badoe.
To one, two-year term?
To one, two-year term on the Veterans...
Two-year term, second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we go any further, what page is that thing on?
I can't find it either.
23.
I didn't say go to 23.
Oh, here we go. This is so much easier.
So the other people that we, Veterans Council, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Wheatley, Aubrey Burke, Mike Scott, Brian Stewart, and, no, that's it. And...
There was an additional, the one that John already did is not on here.
Right.
Dennis.
Right.
But he has an application and everything, right?
So are all these people veterans?
I mean, we just did his, didn't we, John?
Aubrey Burke and Mike Scott are not veterans, right? Is Brian Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
He's a veteran?
James Bailey, yes. Ron Wheatley, yes.
That's Brian Stewart, the dad?
Brian Stewart, the retired chief.
Great. Anyone want to make a motion for...
Move Brian Stewart to the Veterans Advisory Council for a term of...
Three years?
Three years.
Three years, second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion, seeing none, unanimous. So if we appoint five, then we can, of those five, we can have one non-veteran.
That's right.
So the other two veterans are Bailey and Wheatley, right? Were there people...
But we're actually at six, Tony.
Who else is there?
Because John, the one, John just, Dennis was just nominated and voted on, we just voted him in.
Well, we just did Dennis and Brian, that's it.
Right, but Dennis is in addition to this, so that would bring you up to six. So then you could actually bring it to two.
You could have two non-veterans.
You could do Aubrey Burke as well as...
Supermajority?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Four of six is a supermajority?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll move James Bailey as a veteran to the Veterans Advisory Council for a term of three years.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I move Michael Scott to Veterans Advisory Council for a period of, what do we have left?
There's a two and three.
We'll do two years for Michael Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so...
And there was a gentleman who wanted to try the one-year, Ron Wheatley.
I was going to say, do we have one year? I thought we did from the, from the...
Charge.
Charge, right?
It says two twos and three threes.
I'm going to look at the charge that you just approved tonight. I don't know. I don't know if it's changed.
I think it was just two and three.
Maybe I misread it. Thought I read one.
Two one-year members.
Really? Okay.
And three four-year members.
Four-year members?
That's what I thought I read.
I'm sorry.
All right. So...
That charge isn't right.
So you have to update this charge, right?
We just, it's been like, this is going to be like, who put a four-year term?
All right, so if you're good with all the appointments you just made into the terms, now you just need a motion to rescind the terms outlined in the charge you approved early this evening to reflect two and three years. That's all you have. That's the cleanest way to do it, other than reappoint everyone.
We need one more appointment. We have four appointments right now.
Should I do that first?
Yes.
Move to rescind the language in the charge earlier and change it to second and two and three years.
No, that's not what you said. Do the one more appointment.
Is that what you said?
I thought that's what you were asking me, Marty, to do the one more appointment. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
So make the last appointment.
I'll move Ron Wheatley to the Veterans Advisory Council for a term of one year.
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
So now somebody make a motion to make the terms of the policy equal that we just voted.
Why don't you do it, John, since you just did a one-year thing?
I think I just screwed it all up.
Correct on the exact...
I thought we were doing two and three.
So move to the rescind the board's prior charge on terms for the VAC and replace with the terms for those so voted.
All right.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. That was a motion by Mr. O'Toole, second by Mr. Harris.
Beautiful.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, point of order. I just nominated Ron Wheatley for a term of one year, which does not reflect the charge of two or three years.
Correct, so it should be two years.
So I want to rescind my vote for Ron Wheatley or move to amend my vote, amend my...
Nomination.
Nomination of Ron Wheatley to reflect a term of two years as opposed to one year.
Wait, wait, before you second it. We just made a motion to make that the term of the agreement, so it's okay that you did it. If you want, it'll only be one year.
Oh, okay, okay, so we're doing one, four?
Because you have one, two, and three.
Yeah.
You did not appoint anybody for four.
No.
All right.
So you replace two and four with one, twos, and threes.
I withdraw my motion.
Which is pretty much...
There you go. I'm not attaching it, there you go.
Good. So we probably just screwed Lorraine all up, but...
Nope, we'll get it.
Lorraine, what do we have so far on that? Ron Wheatley, one.
Wheatley's one. Scott and Dennis are two.
Right.
Brian and Bailey are three.
Yep.
Correct.
That's correct.
Are we missing one more?
Yes, Aubrey Burke.
Aubrey Burke. Did you say Bailey was?
Bailey's three.
Great.
So we can, Aubrey Burke is not a veteran.
Right.
But we could put her on because there'd still be a supermajority?
That's correct. It's six and you can choose the term.
So, I nominate Aubrey Burke for a term of two years?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Sure.
I think we have everybody.
Yep. Good job, Marty.
Okay. So, now also the...are we gonna do the Beach Commission?
That's just the one person from the Planning Board.
Conservation Commission.
Conservation.
I nominate...oh, is it a nominate? Nominate William Schmidt?
What a motion.
Motion?
To accept Bill Schmidt.
To the Situate Beach Commission for a term of... It's not on here.
It's the motion. That's the page.
Okay, for a term of three years.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, that's a full committee now.
That's a full committee.
Clear.
Awesome. Okay, other business, correspondence.
They can take up parking.
Seeing no correspondence, any other business? Marty?
No.
Yes, I have to quickly say, I went on Friday night to present an award under the PJ Steverman's fundraising. They had a tournament, a golf tournament. I have to say that I was amazed at the amount of money they've raised in 20 years, $350,000 given and a number of things throughout the town, whether it's contributing to the Easter egg roll, the redoing of the floor at Gates, I guess the scoreboard at Gates. You can take a look at the information stand that's outside the transfer station, the hockey rink outside here, redoing different things, just to name a few. In particular, they inspired the Friends of Situate Recreation, who have done a lot of fundraising to supplement the town's needs in various things, again, to the tune of $350,000. In particular, they recognize an individual in our town, like so many other people who are unsung, who you don't know what's going on, but things get done. This person in particular has dedicated himself for over 40 years to youth recreation, baseball, girls' softball, all sorts of things, and that was J.L. or John Murphy. And I have to say, I was honored to be there. I was...he was so happy. He said it was one of the best days. Actually, he said it was the best day of his life. And he was there with his family. And the thing that really defines him is the very next morning, at 8:30 in the morning, he was out on the baseball field marking it, getting it prepared for baseball. And I was there watching my son play football, and I was amazed. So, this person has been doing this, and you might see him, and you know, if you do see him around town, congratulate him. It's well-deserved, and he received the Fifth Annual Mr. C.'s Community Spirit for Recreation. And you know, as I said, he went into the pantheon of people like Mr. C. and Al Kozowski and others, who have just done wonders for your town and frankly, you know, who will make your community better. So, just wanted to share that with the board quickly.